Good evening, everyone. We'll go ahead and call the regular council meeting for September 8th, 2009 to order. First thing on the agenda is always the roll call and determination of the quorum. Amber, if you would, please.
Wa.
Here.
Martinson.
Here.
Quaker.
Here.
Costello.
Here.
La Croix.
Here.
Chapman.
Here.
Olson.
Here.
Here.
Kroger.
Here.
Hattcock. Here. We have a quorum.
Thank you. Just a couple of reminders, some housekeeping. If you happen to have a cellphone or a pager, if you could please turn that off, or leave it outside, or destroy it. We don't care which. We appreciate it. The other thing is, if you wish to speak to any issue on tonight's agenda, we actually have speaker request forms. They're to your left, our right. They're over on the media table. If you could please fill that out, along with the agenda number. That way, as we make our way through the agenda, we'll make sure that we do not overlook you. With that, we go to the next thing on the agenda, which is the invocation. So if everyone will please rise. Pastor Heeman will be from the First Baptist Church. Will be giving your invocation, will be followed immediately by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please join me in a word of prayer. Almighty God, you have given to us a beautiful area of this country to live in. We pray this evening that we would be good stewards of the land and of the resources entrusted to us. We also ask this evening that you would be with our elected officials and their families. Protect them, keep them safe, give them your wisdom. Thank you, God, for these blessings of life. Amen. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Next thing on the agenda is adoption of the agenda. I do have a couple things we need to deal with. Item number 110 does need to follow, actually, item number 115. So we'll be taking item 110 to immediately follow item 115. I also had a request, and it should be actually, I believe, on your agenda. A 89A you should have a handout, and this is to authorize the mayor and the finance officer to sign a covenants agreement. Is that correct, Marcia? Any additional items to the agenda? Please turn on your light. It's called to Alderman Lloyd La Croix.
Thank you, Mayor. Under Alderman Reports, it would be 99A, I'd like to have a discussion, a report on budget from the council president, and discussion on a strategic plan.
Very good. We'll call that 99A. Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyfenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had a request here that, on item number 105, and I believe 106 is connected, that if we could move that up on the agenda. We've had these people here a couple different times, and the last time that we had them here, we had made some commitments to get out there and look at this area, and I don't know that that's ever been followed through with. So I wanted to get this taken care of earlier, if possible.
Okay. Is there somewhere on the agenda you'd like to move that?
Well, as soon as we could, on what would be appropriate.
105 and 106.
I'm looking here to the end of our consent calendar. Our consent calendar runs through, looks like item consent, through 77 would be the end of the consent calendar.
Like 77A, or 78 or something.
Okay, let's take a couple more lights. And that was item 105 and 106, Alderman Wyfenbach?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
106. Follow 77, I believe that was. Okay, additional. Let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hattcock.
Just an airport liaison report.
Okay, any additional? Any additional? Seeing no additional lights, the chair would look for a motion to approve the agenda with the following amendments. To take item 110 to follow immediately after 115, so we'd actually be removing item 110 from a consent calendar, to add items 89A, which is authorize mayor and the finance officer to sign a covenants agreement, item number 99, 99A, which is a budget report and strategic discussion. That is Alderman Lloyd La Croix. Item 99B, well, actually, it's not going to be an item, also to move items 105 and 106 to immediately follow item number 77. And item 99B is an airport liaison report. Any additional additions or changes to the agenda? Let's go to Alderman Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to at least speak. I will be voting against the adoption of the agenda as it's proposed. Not that we need to change it, but I think the council worked hard not to come in and start moving items around the agenda, because there are folks here whose item is listed at a certain place, and I mean, those people come and wait, and groups come and wait. So I will vote no on the adoption of the agenda tonight.
Okay, let's go to Alderwoman Karen Olson.
And I'm agreement, I'm in agreement with Malcolm. People come based on the time that they assume the item is going to be on the agenda, and I just think it's, from past experience, it's unfair to make some people who are further down in the agenda wait even longer while we rearrange.
Okay, very good. I see a number of other lights here. Let's go to Jason Green. Jason, since there's concern about moving something up on the agenda, would it be appropriate to vote on that item separately and then move back, or what's your suggestion as far as how we proceed procedurally?
My understanding is that you have a motion to approve as presented.
Yep.
So I think the appropriate way, if someone wants to change the order, that you need a motion to amend.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Bilwa.
Just making sure, I echo Malcolm and Karen. I don't think we should be messing with the agenda once it's been set. Thank you.
Okay, let's go to Alderman Ron Wyfenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The reason I moved this is these people have been here for like two or three times in front of the council. The council, on the last time, said that they were going to do some things that never got followed through with. And so I just thought it was appropriate that we could take this item and make a motion on it when it is, and then move on and try to follow through with the commitment that we made. So, and that was the only reason. And it's not out of order. I think that we've done this in the past for other, other people, and I don't think anybody's going to be upset about it. So they've been here. It's not like the first time they've been here. So they've been here. I believe this is the third time.
Okay. Everyone clear on the motion on the floor. Motion on the floor is to approve, or to adopt the agenda with the following changes. Move item 110 to immediately follow item 115. We need to do that procedurally, because that's, I believe, those two items are linked. To add an item number 89A, which is authorize the mayor and the finance officer to sign a covenants agreement, 99A, which is a budget proposal, or budget report, and also a discussion on strategic planning. That's Alderman Lloyd La Croix. Then we also had a request from Alderman Wyfenbach to move item 105 and 106 to immediately follow item number 77, and also a 99B, which is an airport liaison report. Everyone clear on the motion? Everyone clear? Seeing no additional lights. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed?
No.
We better take a quick roll call.
Costello.
Aye.
La Croix.
No.
Chapman. Olson. Wyfenbach. Kroger. Hattcock. Wa. Martinson. Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Next, we will go on to awards and recognitions. We do not have any tonight. We are on to the general public comment period. This is a time for members of the public to discuss or express concerns to the council on any issue not on the agenda. Action will not be taken at tonight's meeting on any issue not on the agenda, except by placement on that agenda by unanimous vote of the council members present. We do have one item, which is, let's see, I don't see a speaker request form, and this is discussion about the Black Hills Center for Equality 2009 AIDS Walk. Who's going to, okay, very good. Now, just for everybody's point of clarification, whenever we have public comment periods, we do have a three-minute time period, and that's not only during this, but also anytime we take public comment during the council meetings. So if you just watch the lights, you'll have three minutes. If you could just identify yourself for the record, and the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Rusty Kovey, and I'm with the Black Hills Center for Equality. According to the South Dakota Department of Health, in the January 2009 statistics, there are over 179 diagnosed cases of HIV and/or AIDS in the Black Hills. There are over 134 of those reported that live in Pennington County. Using the 2008 census and the January 2009 Department of Health Surveillance Report, that equals one in every 1,000 people in the Black Hills area that are infected with HIV or AIDS. Through cooperative agreements with the South Dakota Department of Health and a partnership with the Volunteers of America, the Black Hills Center for Equality is able to provide free confidential HIV testing. We also provide a support group for those infected with HIV and their caregivers. We provide education, prevention, and awareness training in the Rapid City area and the nine-county Greater Black Hills region. To raise public awareness, on September 19th at 12:00 PM, we are hosting the Third Annual Black Hills AIDS Walk at Memorial Park's band show. Following, we will have a luncheon and various drawings. All proceeds will benefit AIDS awareness, education, prevention, and outreach for people in our local area. It will also fund the rapid test, where the tester and the client will receive the results in 20 minutes versus two weeks with the ORACURE test. We would like to invite the public, city staff, city council, and members of the mayor's office to come and participate in this event. Once again, I want to thank you for your time and your support.
Thank you. I do not see any additional speaker request forms for the general public comment period. We do need to go back and approve the minutes. Chair would look for a motion to approve the minutes from the August 10th, 11th, and 12th special council meetings, and also the August 17th, 2009 regular council meeting. So move.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thank you, everyone. That does take us to the non-public hearing items. This is items 2 through 100. Chair would look for a motion to open the public comment period for items 2 through 77 inclusive.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. We have one speaker request form, and this is item number 11 from Steve Kraskiewicz. Am I close, Steve?
Close, Mayor.
Okay. Steve, if you identify yourself for the record, and then the floor is yours. Just remember, you have three minutes.
My name is Steve Kraskiewicz. I am a real estate manager with Cabela's Incorporated. I am out of the corporate office in Sidney, Nebraska. I'd like to thank the mayor and the council for consideration of our request on the variance, on the plat, on the VIC property. Our plans are indefinite at this time on the development of that. However, we are in consultation with several developers, and what I would request of the council is, in the covenant that is proposed, that we could eliminate the five-year term on the development of that. Right now, we have no definite plans. We're continuing to, as I say, work with potential buyers, developers of that. However, I think if we put a five-year limit on getting this thing done, under this economy, we may not be able to accomplish that, and that may just drive buyers further away.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do not see any additional speaker request forms. Chair would look for a motion to close the public comment period on items 2 through 77 inclusive. We have a motion, a second, any discussion on that motion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. We are on to the consent calendar. This is items 2 through 66 inclusive. Chair would ask if any items 2 through 66 inclusive need to be pulled from the consent calendar. Let's go to Marcia Elkins, Growth Management.
Item 11, please.
Item 11. Very good. Let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hattcock.
Number 16 and number 18, please.
Number 16, number 18. Any additional items to be pulled from the consent calendar? Consent calendar consists of items 2 through 66 inclusive. Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Item 14 and 49.
14 and 49. Very good. So far, the chair has items 11, 14, 16, 18, and 49 to be pulled from the consent calendar. Any additional items the council or staff would like to have pulled from the consent calendar? If not, the chair would look for a motion to approve the consent calendar, items 2 through 66 inclusive, with the exception of items 11, 14, 16, 18, and 49. Thank you. Little delay there. Any discussion on that motion? The motion on the floor is to approve the consent calendar, items 2 through 66 inclusive, with the exception of 11, 14, 16, 18, and 49. Seeing no lights. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. We are to the Public Works Agenda, item number 11. And Alderman Costello, if you could read an item number 11, please, under Public Works Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number 11 is approve a request from Terry Cash, Adren Design International Incorporated, to appeal the denial of a request for exception to Rapid City standards to allow utility service to cross another property with the attorney's office drafting the appropriate covenant agreement, and asks that the property taxes be paid in arrears since the date of the certification of the public vote. I yield to the floor.
Okay, Marcia, do you have a recommendation?
Certainly. The covenant has not been signed by the applicant, and as you've heard this evening, they're not, they'd like to discuss the terms of that. Perhaps you'd like to send us back to Public Works for further discussion. The document's been drafted, and at that point in time, you could allow for that discussion and have it signed before your next council meeting. So my suggestion would be to send it back to Public Works.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a motion, a second. That motion is to send this back to Public Works. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Let's see. Alderman Costello, could you please read an item number 14, please?
Certainly, Mr. Mayor. Item 14 is acknowledge the report on the update on the city landfill scale project and use of portable scales, and I move to acknowledge.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to acknowledge. Discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciated the update in Public Works Committee last week, and I think it's important that in the future, when work like this is done, that the city find a way to weigh the loads that are, that are coming in. And a quick question for our Public Works Director. I realize it can depend on density, but in terms of a 30-yard container, how mu, how much garbage could, how, in terms of tonnage, how much garbage can a 30-yard container hold?
Let's go to Robert Ellis, our Public Works Director.
It would really, it would really depend on what type of materials in there. If you have something that's heavy and dense, like asphalt shingles, asphalt millings, it's going to weigh a lot more than if it's two-by-fours, or sheet rock, something of that nature. It really depends on what type of a load you have in there.
Alderman Quaker, you still have the floor, sir.
The point that I'm making is, is that it appears that we, at least on the surface, that we would be charging less, at least for this two-week timeframe, for a load that did not have a, that was not weighed, versus a load that, loads that are just coming in, and the people are announcing, I have a 30-yard, 30-yard container. Those loads would be charged less than loads that were actually weighed, because you really don't know the, you don't know the density. Is that, is that a fair statement?
Mr. Ellis, can you just give us an update of what we've been doing?
Sure. I can certainly take the floor up here and share some information.
Alderman Quaker, did you have a specific question? Did you want to just listen to this? You still have the floor.
Listen, I'll wait.
Okay, very good.
What we did is we took a look at the entire year. If you look on the bottom there, 52 year, 52-week year, this is throughout the year, our incoming load count. So we count every vehicle that comes in, whether it's a pickup truck, it's a commercial garbage truck, a roll-off, whatever the case may be. So you can see week 35 and 36, right here and here, those are the two weeks that we were actually under construction. So you can see that the number of loads coming into the landfill, for whatever reason, whether people were just trying to avoid the landfill during the time it was under construction, or as you can see, it is kind of cyclical. Almost every other week, it's up, then it's down, up, then it's down. We were trending down to begin with, so the total number of loads were going down. And then the last week, when we did open it up on Thursday, we were actually opened up and working off the scales, traffic started increasing again. And then if you take a look at revenue, of course, that's going to correspond to the number of trips coming into the landfill. But you'll see that revenue also trended down for the first week, and then started popping up the second week. So it looked pretty uniform when you compare the number of people coming in to the revenue. I will say, if you take a look at that revenue, it appears that that first week might have been off $20,000 compared to the prior week. We did take a look at bringing in some portable scales, and quite frankly, the cost of doing that was about $20,000. It was $14,000 to rent them for two weeks. And then the approach work that you'd have to do would probably put that around $20,000. So it would have been a wash in this case. The other option of using the portable scales, with the police department has a number of portable scales they use for weighing overweight vehicles, in my opinion, would have been a very dangerous situation. These scales are like bathroom scales. You essentially, a truck would pull up with its engine still running, you're sliding these scales underneath the wheels. You have varying wheelbases, varying length between axles. In my mind, having running vehicles with people trying to slide scales underneath them moving forward might have been a dangerous situation. We did look at all the options. The ordinance does specify that when the scale is not operational, we go by the cubic yard. We simply followed what the ordinance told us to do.
Very good.
When you look at the revenue, I don't think there was a big impact.
Thank you. Alderman Quaker, you still have the floor, sir.
Thank you. I think it also depends on, on what loads came in. I mean, if it's, if it's smaller vehicles versus larger vehicles, I mean, those two, those two charts wouldn't necessarily tell the, tell the full story either. I, I do think in, in the future that, I mean, what's clear is, is that it is better to have, have good weights, rather than going with a self-declaration system. And I'm hoping that this can be corrected prior to any future improvements or closures that would be done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's go to, motion on the floor. Just a reminder, the motion is to acknowledge the report. Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyfenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In clarification, after conversation with Robert Ellis, I want to make sure that I clarified on, on, you made a statement that they're charged by the cubic yard yet. I mean, can you explain the ordinance, I guess?
Yes. The, the ordinance states that when the scale is not operationally charged by the cubic yard, our price for the cubic yard was calculated when we did the rate study, based on a compacted load. Most of our loads that come in, it's garbage trucks where they compact their load. But oftentimes, when you have a roll-off, or you have somebody that has a pickup truck, that they bring in loose debris, whether it's sheet rock mixed with some, some two-by-four, something like that, uncompacted load, we didn't feel that it was fair to charge for a compacted rate. So the guy working the scale house, our crews that are out there, try to make a reasonable assumption of what it costs to actually bury that refuse at the landfill, because we do compact it with our own equipment up on the hill.
So I just wanted to make sure that I clarified in my conversation with you, because we talked about 30-yard roll-offs, but two people with two different 30-yard roll-offs could be charged differently. Is that correct?
Yeah, depending on what type of load they're bringing in.
Thank you.
Okay. Motion on the floor is to acknowledge the report. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Alderman Costello, could you read an item number 16, please?
My pleasure. Item number 16 is to approve change order number 6F to Heavy Construction Incorporated for the Well 12 and Stony Creek Booster Station for a decrease in the amount of $41,204.98, and I move for approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hattcock.
Just a question for Robert. Robert, did, is Well 12 online, and everything is working well on Well 12?
Robert Ellis.
Yes, that is correct. Well 12 is online. It's working wonderfully. It's filling the reservoir up at Red Rock. It's also filling the Skyline Reservoir, or excuse me, the reservoir up on Highway 16. It's operational, working very well.
Thank you very much. That's all I need to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is for approval. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item number 18, please.
Item number 18 is approve change order number 4 to Nat Gun Corporation for the Elk Vale Low Level Reservoir for an increase of $37,774.90. I move for approval.
We have a motion, a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hattcock.
And again, Robert, on the reservoir, maybe a progress report on that, and then why the increase?
Mr. Ellis.
This project is actually tracking slightly ahead of schedule. If you're driving along I-90 or Elk Vale Reservoir, you see that white, large concrete structure up there. They actually have everything poured. They're working on some of the outside appurtenances that will feed the water to that structure. 3.5 million gallon reservoir slated to be completed sometime before the end of the year. The reason for this change order that's on the council tonight, when we were going through the 11, 6, 19 review process, council had requested that we put some type of vegetation around the perimeter of the reservoir to disguise it from, someday there will be a neighborhood around it, also disguise it from traffic along I-90. All the trees and shrubs and the irrigation system that are required to do that are a result of this change order here, and then also some driveway improvements to allow for two parking spaces at the Signal Hill Reservoir.
So this is basically a change order for the cover-up. Now, just, just a question. We did a reservoir over in Red Rocks, and that had irrigation and some other things around there. Are that, is that still being taken care of? Basically, if we're spending $40,000 for irrigation and everything else, what, and I guess my issue here is that I'm told that the irrigation and some other things in the Red Rock Reservoir are not actually online. So I know this is off-key, sir, but I'm not willing to spend $37,000 if we're not going to keep up what we're paying for.
Robert, yeah, we're getting a little bit off-topic. Please answer the question.
Yes. The difference between the two reservoirs, the Red Rock Reservoir is completely buried. You cannot see that structure. It's completely covered by gra, by soil, and then there's vegetation on top of it. This reservoir will be exposed. You will see this structure. The trees that are going to be planted up there, it's very arid. We will need the irrigation to keep those trees.
Robert, I think the question was where we at as far as the status of Red Rock. Have we addressed all the concerns? No?
It has not been finalized yet. We have a final change order coming in for that that will be for a decrease, but it has not been completed, no.
And I guess my, my point, Mayor, is if we're going to spend $37,000, we're going to have someone put in irrigation in these areas for reservoirs and stuff. I want to make sure they're being used, and we're taking the time to make sure that those irrigation systems do work and they keep working. Even if it's hidden or whatever, then we should have put the irrigation system in, in the first place, and spent the money. I just want to make sure we're spending the money on, if we're putting irrigation in, when we're making this look nice for a reason, that these things stay online, and we spent money for a reason. So I can probably get with you and talk to you a little bit more on that. I'm just saying this again to make sure that if we're, we're doing these systems, that we're keeping on top of them, and make sure that that area is taken care of like it should be, if we're spending the money for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is for approval. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. That takes us to item number 49. And Alderwoman Olson, could you please read an item number 49?
Authorize the mayor and finance officer to sign CDARS deposit placement agreement with First National Bank in Sioux Falls. And I would move approval.
Second. We have a motion, a second for approval. Discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. I was just wondering if our city finance officer could briefly describe what a CDARS agreement is, and also did Rapid City Banks also have a chance to compete for this agreement?
Very good. Let's go to Jim Preston, city finance officer.
Thank you, Mayor. CDARS, I guess is how they pronounce that acronym. But essentially, what that is, does authorize our fiscal agent, Sioux Falls, which is the trustee for the funds we have holding in relations to bonds, reserve, et cetera. This authorizes them to purchase CDs, more or less what I understand, on a combined, maybe with other entities or whatever, not to exceed the maximum FDIC insured, so we're fully protected on that. But we get the best interest rate that we can for the city of Rapid City. As far as to answer your question, no, this would not be offered, because we don't have a trustee in, in the city of Rapid City that has our funds.
Alderman Quaker, did you have a follow-up?
Thank you, Mayor. Have we, have we looked for a trustee in Rapid City that could handle these, handle these funds?
We can check into that. Yep.
So is, is this a long-term agreement?
Mr. Preston?
The CDs we...
The CDs, we can purchase for any different length of period of time, so not necessarily.
So how do we commence the search for a trustee to get the best possible rate for the taxpayers?
Mr. Preston?
Well, again, the trustees for the current bonds that we have is in Sioux Falls, and that's where the funds are at.
Yep. Let me see if I can weigh in just a little bit. This specifically is dealing with the bond issuance, correct, Mr. Preston?
Yes, that's correct.
And so this is not, as far as investment of city funds, as far as any of the other accounts? This is dealing strictly with the bonds? And so they are the trustees and that's why we're going with this company? Is that, am I tracking correctly? That was my understanding.
First National Bank, we've used them primarily because they were the first trustee in the state of South Dakota, and that's where we started with our bonds on that. And so we have used them as our fiscal agent, essentially.
Okay. Alderman Quaker, you still have the floor, sir?
Thank you, Mayor. We have, when it came time to discussing the water bonds for more than $100 million, the council chose, and I think wisely so, to not automatically to use the same folks that we'd used in the past, but to go out and make sure that we could get the best deal. In the past, Doherty and Company had always received the bonding for the city of Rapid City, and First National Bank in Sioux Falls had typically received the, in my understanding, the CDARS agreements and other business. And I think that it's only fair that we put that out for request proposal so that we can get the best possible deal. And there might be a local bank that could provide the best possible deal. I think that we're making a mistake to just automatically approve this with a bank in Sioux Falls, and there might be banks in the Black Hills that could provide us a better rate. Thank you.
Yep. I don't see any additional lights. Let's go to Jim Preston, city finance officer.
Yep. Okay, a couple of things on that. This is for funds that we've already had, so we haven't sold the $41 million bond yet. Secondly, talking to our financial advisor, which is Barry Fisk, he encourages for the $41 million to stay with the current fiscal agent that we have. If the council decides they want us to explore options, we certainly can, but I certainly would like to visit with him why that was his recommendation on that and come back before the council and make that explanation to you.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is for approval. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none. All is in favor. Signify by saying aye. Opposed. Motion passes with one no from Alderman Sam Quaker. Thank you, everyone. That does take us to the end of the consent calendar. We are on to items 78 through 100, and per the motion by the council, let's see, we are going to go to item number 105 and 106. That is under Growth Management. Let's see here. Alderman Wyfembach, could you, not Wyfembach, I'm sorry, Costello?
Easy mistake.
Yep. You guys look so much alike. Could you please read an item number 105, please?
Certainly, Mr. Mayor. Item number 105 is approve a request by the city of Rapid City to consider an application for an amendment to the comprehensive plan adopting the Spring Creek Neighborhood Area Future Land Use Plan in the area generally described as being located south of Spring Creek, east of Boulder Hill Road, north of Naughty Pine Road, and west of South Dakota Highway 79. I yield to the floor.
Could we have a motion, please?
Move approval.
Okay, we have, okay. Let me acknowledge the motion that I'm going to have you interpret. We have a motion on the floor and a second for approval. Let's go to Jason Green, city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. These items were moved off of the hearing half of the calendar. Therefore, before you have a motion for approval, you need to open a public hearing on these two items.
Very good. And that's why it creates problems when we move things around at some point. So I'm going to go to the motion maker and ask if it's all right for them to withdraw the motion. Is it all right to withdraw the motion so we can actually open the, is that all right with the seconder?
Yes.
Okay. Having that, the chair ruled there is no motion on the floor. The chair will look for motion to open the public comment, or the public hearing. We have a motion, a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none. All is in favor. Signify by saying aye. Opposed. Motion passes. We're during the public hearing. Now we proceed. What's that? Yes. Okay, very good. Yep, just for those items. 105, 106. Okay, at this point, we will be taking public comment. There again, keep in mind, we do limit it to three minutes per request, and the first on the speaker request forms is Brian Fenske on item 105. Mr. Fenske, if you could come up and just, for the record, please identify yourself and just watch the lights.
Hi there. My name is Brian Fenske. I live out on Wallace Street. Basically, this is just off of Neck Yoke Road, and it's kind of a stone's throw away from Hart Ranch area. That's the area we're talking about. And the contention here on our part is there's a design to put a collector road in which would extend from Spring Creek Road and cut Kitty Corner across multiple ridges to hook up to what's called Wallace Street and eventually Murray Lane that gets you out on Neck Yoke Road. And this territory is extremely rough and extremely, a lot of valleys and high ridges, and the territory would not be conducive to any type of a collector that I could come up with. So I guess my question today is if this collector is designed to be an easement up into Hart Ranch, or if it indeed is to be a way from traversing from Spring Creek Road across to Neck Yoke Road, which seems like an unlikely path. Most roads lead into Rapid City, and I can see why people would want to get from Highway 79 over to Highway 16. That makes all the sense in the world. But to go from Spring Creek over to Neck Yoke to, across all these ridges and hills, it just doesn't make any sense whatsoever. And the expense to the city and the county to do something like this would be exorbitant. There's, I guess that's my only comment. So I'd move to continue this to the future until the council lets time to come out and take a look at actually what's going on there. So that's all I have. Thank you very kindly.
Thank you. We also have a speaker request form from Julie Mueller, item 105. There again, Julie, if you could just please identify yourself for the record.
Julie Mueller, and I'd like to thank you for moving us up because as Councilman Wyfembach said, we've been to numerous meetings and basically the only thing we're looking for again tonight is a continuance. We don't want to take up a bunch of people's time. We were in June or July when we had our last meeting with all of you. It was our understanding that council members were going to come out to the property and meet with us, the landowners, and that didn't happen. So that's why we're asking for the continuance. I don't know if time got away from everyone or who was supposed to organize it, but it's my understanding or hope that five of you at a time can come out. If you guys can arrange it on your end, I'll arrange it on mine for landowners, and we can actually go over the area in which you're proposing to put this highway by all of our property that's out there. And I guess I don't think that's an unreasonable request because your decision is going to affect a lot of us, and we really, really want to show you what we're talking about. And again, with the neighbors who we've talked about, and thank you all for granting continuances for them. They will still be in Arizona. I believe you should all have a copy of the email from them, but their son is still, he's been in the hospital the last two weeks. He still is fighting his cancer, and they may not get back till November. So if this is a future land use plan, if you could please take the time and meet with us, and I will do everything on our end to make sure we have people, you know, from our area to meet with you and talk to you about other options. I know that my husband had filled out three different maps to Growth Management to suggest other areas that were undeveloped to put roads through. So I mean, those are areas that we wanted to show you as well. So if you could just grant us a continuance again until we can all get together and maybe the neighbors get back, but yet get together maybe at 6 o'clock or something, some night before it gets dark, Bing's fall's coming, but yet before the snow flies. And we'd be more than happy to set aside any time, any time at all, to go over different options with you and let you know where our concerns are, the traffic, the safety, and that kind of thing. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. We also have a speaker request form for Mike Mueller, item 106. There again, Mike, if you could just identify yourself for the record, please.
Certainly. Thank you, Mayor. Mike Mueller, 23764 Wallace. Thank you, council members, again, for the opportunity to speak at an open forum. I'm president of the Neck Yoke Valley Road District, and every single member of that road district is in unison regarding this topic. Every one of them filled out the complaint, or not the complaint, but their concerns about this idea of a collector street potentially being proposed for our area. Every one of them filled out a negative response to that. We do invite you out, and I appreciate Mr. Wyfembach's offer to accelerate the agenda for us, because if we can have some eyes and ears out there, we can show you some of our concerns, which are legitimate. And since there are vested owners of property out there that are developed, we'd like to try and get some open-minded government in addition to the open government. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I do not have any additional speaker request forms. Does anyone else wish to speak to items 105 or 106? If not, the chair will look to close the public hearing. Thank you. We have a motion, a second. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none. All is in favor. Signify by saying aye. Opposed. Motion passes. Now we're on to item number 105. If we could have a motion, please.
Mr. Mayor, move to continue to the first council meeting in October.
In October?
105 and 106.
That would be October 5th.
October 5th.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to continue both items 105 and 106 to the October 5th city council meeting. Let's take some lights. Let's go, I'm sorry, Alderman Wyfembach, you still have the floor if you'd like it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Mayor. The reason I wanted to move this, these people have been here several times, and there's been some confusion on this item. And the last meeting, there was some, I think, understanding from them that we were, as collectively as a council, were going to try to make an opportunity to visit the sites and see what's going on out there and actually physically visiting them. I know personally myself, I haven't made it out there, so to try to vote on this tonight would put me basically out of order. I'm not feeling comfortable doing that, and I think that if we had the opportunity to go out there and look, sometimes it could make a difference in what transpires. So, and I also want to thank my colleagues for allowing me to accelerate this item. These people have been here several occasions and had several missteps prior to that, so.
Thank you. Just a reminder, the motion on the floor is a continuation motion. If we could try and limit the discussion to the continuation motion. Let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hatcock.
I also would like to thank Mr. Wyfembach for bringing this forward on 105 and 106 because I personally haven't been out there either, and I'd like to go see the property, and that's why I also asked if we can continue this. So thank you, council, for your patience and your understanding on this issue.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. I also support the continuation motion, and I would ask that the complete discussion information be brought forward regarding what the discussion was in the Future Land Use Committee, as those minutes unfortunately are not public. And I think this is a good opportunity for some good open government and to make that information public. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I support the continuation motion, but my concern would be, we're still going through budget hearings, and I'm just wondering if October 5th is realistic enough time to gather the council. And I'm not sure if we're talking about gathering the entire council, or if you're talking about making connections with individual council members, bringing them out. But I question if that's enough time for us to get out there and take a look at this with everything else that's going on at this time. So I'll just kind of throw it to the council without making a substitute motion. Does this need to be continued a little bit longer just to give the council more time to look at it? And I'm in favor of that if that's the case.
Very good. Let's go to Alderman Lloyd LaCorre.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I just want some clarification on this because it seems like when I was at the last meeting that we did continue this on, I discussed giving the council a chance to go out and look at it. And now that's what we're talking about is that we didn't have enough time or didn't have a chance to do that. And I talked to Ms. Mueller, and I'd like to know who's going to be responsible for making the contacts to satisfy the parties to get out there and take a look at the property. I guess that'd be my question to Ms. Mueller.
Julie, did you understand the question? If you could, just so we have it on tape, could you come forward? And then, my apologies for making, coming up front, but when you talk from back there, the mics don't pick it up.
Okay, thank you. It's my understanding it has, you know, can be no more than five. So if Growth Management needs to be there, I don't know because we would like to show them the maps, again, that we have done. Anytime you need us, we'll be there. I guess you guys could coordinate your own. You just tell me and we'll be there.
Floyd, you have the floor, sir.
My suggestion was, as we talked earlier, that you take on that task.
Oh, I can do that.
That would be great.
But is there a certain...
Just five at a time.
Okay, so I'll have my husband email you because [inaudible].
Okay, very good.
So I'll have him email you, and then if you guys can, is there certain days better?
If you have any questions, why don't you just call the mayor's office and they can walk you through it.
Okay, and thank you so much. Thank you. We have spent hours. Thank you.
Motion on the floor is to continue both items 105 and 106 to the October 5th city council meeting. Let's go to, there again, the motion on the floor is continue. Let's go to Alderwoman Karen Olson.
I would make a substitute motion to continue this to an October meeting in view of the other additional neighbors.
The motion on the floor is to...
I'm sorry, I misspoke. Do it continue this until late November?
Do you have a date specific, please?
And I would need some help with the date.
November 2nd. November 2nd be the first council meeting in November.
I would suggest November 16th. My substitute motion would be to continue this meeting, this item, until November 16th.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for a substitute motion to continue both items 105, 106 to the November 16th city council meeting. Discussion on that motion. And there again, we're going to talk only specifically about the continuation motion. We're not going to give any latitude. Let's go to Alderman Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, again, I agree with the continuation motion. As we continue this item, is there a role for staff in this? I think there's already been a lot of work involved in this, and I think it could be a little bit counterproductive just to get the council involved and the council out there looking at something and then coming back, changing the scope of things without having conversations with the staff. So I'll leave that up to the mayor, if there's a role for staff to play a part in that as we go out and take a look at this property.
Yep, very good. There again, the motion on the floor is a substitute motion to continue. Discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderman Aaron Costello.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too am in favor of the continuation motion, especially since I'll be gone a couple of weeks in October. And in thinking about Alderman Chapman's comments about staff's role, I fell back onto what Alderman Quaker said earlier about if we could just have some insight as to the vision as why this particular area was chosen, because obviously there's some difference of opinion on whether or not it's the proper route for this neighborhood. So any information as to that discussion that could be brought forward, I would really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is continuation. Let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hatcock.
Just a question. Back when I was on the Future Land Use, we met with the property owners when we were making those decisions. By chance, did, in this case, did they meet with the property owners for future land use to get their insight of what they were thinking on this property?
Very quickly, because we're getting off-topic, but Marcia, please answer the question.
Yes, the Future Land Use Committee held meetings with the owners of Forty Acres Abore. They had another neighborhood meeting where they invited everyone in who owns property in the area. And Ms. Horton has also had numerous conversations about this. Also, the Future Land Use Committee has taken a tour of the area, so.
Good, thank you.
And Marcia, could I ask her a question?
If it's to the continuation motion?
If we continue this [laughing] motion on this, were the property owners with the Future Land Use, based on this continuing, did the majority of them have the insight of where you guys were going in favor of what was happening out there?
Marcia?
The road was moved to accommodate them, and it was moved to a new location, although it was not moved as far as the landowners were desirous of.
So one more thing. If we're going to continue this, can we maybe have some type of insight, an email or anything that says some of these things so we have that information? If staff could do that for us as a...
Certainly.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you for playing. Motion on the floor is a continuation motion. Seeing no further lights. Motion on the floor is a substitute motion. Continue both items 105, 106 to the November 16th meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed. Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. That does take us, let's see, we are at the end of the consent public hearing calendar. That does take us, let's see, we are at the end of the consent public hearing calendar. Let's see, we are on to the consent hearing items. This will now be items 107 through 113, because we have disposed of items 105 and 106. Is that correct?
Seventy-eight. Can I go back to seventy-eight?
Oh, you're right. I'm jumping ahead, thank you. We are back to the end of the consent items, and so we're on to the non-consent items. This is items 78 through 100. And the Chair looked for motion to open the public comment period, and items 78 through 100 inclusive, please.
Hold move.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. We have no speaker request forms on any items 78 through 100 inclusive. Does anyone in the audience wish to speak to any item 78 through 100 inclusive? If not, the Chair will look for motion to close the public comment period on items 78 through 100 inclusive.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. We are on to the non-consent, and we will start with item number 78. Alderwoman Olson, could you read in item number 78, please?
This is first reading, item 78 is first reading of ordinance 5535 regarding supplemental appropriation number five for 2009. Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval, and discussion on that motion. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item number 79, please.
First reading ordinance 5533, annual appropriation ordinance for FY 2010. Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion on that motion. Mr. Preston, let me take a couple of lights, unless you have something specific.
I just wanted to say that what they're approving is the revised, it's dated September 8, 2009.
Okay, very good.
And it is attached, and they do have a hard copy on their dais. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Thank you, everyone. Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Just so I don't get confused, Mr. Mayor, this is for the budget, the first reading of the 2010.
That is correct.
I'd like to make a motion to remove the CPI from the budget.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a substitute motion and a second. Jason, I want to make sure that we're, is this going to be an amendment? Okay, we're going to treat this as an amendment to the motion on the floor. The original motion on the floor was for approval, and that would have included the CPI, so the motion to amend is to remove the CPI. Okay? Alderman Wyffenbach, you still have the floor, if you'd like it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, in light of going through the budget talks, and realizing that the mayor and staff put in a lot of time and effort to balance the budget without using the CPI, and I see no reason to add this to the budget as it is balanced without it. Conversations of funding the wish list, I think, are not necessary at this point. I think, given the times that today, then, what our constituents have faced with job losses, increases in fees, increases in property tax in general, just adding another layer of increase of property tax, whether some feel it's as minute as it may be, I think, is not necessary, and that would be why I made the motion to remove it from the budget. It's not necessary, the budget is balanced without it, and I think that's how government should work. I'm not a firm believer in growing government in any way, shape, or form, and I think that as we add on, and we continue to increase budgets when they're not necessary, it has a tendency to grow into areas of, that we don't need to fund as a city in itself. And I have some more thoughts, but they just keep kind of slipping my mind here. But the whole process is, if we leave, if we leave the money in the hands of the people who are going to spend it, I think they're going to spend it. People in Rapid City have X amount of dollars to spend, and as we take that money away from them, and take their choices away from what they want to spend it on, as little as it may be, it makes a difference to a lot of people in our community. And I think sending them a message that we're to be fiscally responsible as a council, I think would be appropriate by moving this CPI. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Was there a second for that motion?
Yes, I believe was Alderman Quaker. Is that correct? Okay, yes.
Not to stifle conversation at all, and I think the motion is appropriate, whether I agree with it or not, at this point is immaterial, but I think it's hard to make these sorts of meaningful changes here at the dais. So, I'm going to make a substitute motion that the council, direct through the mayor's office, a date to look for another budget work session down there on the floor, where these sorts of things can come up, and if people want to make changes to that, and make this change, or any other change, or have other conversation about it. I just think it's hard to do it in this format up here. It just becomes dicey, and we don't get it right when we do it here. I think that everybody has an opportunity and a right to make whatever changes, or put them on the floor, so, long-winded, but I would make the motion that we have K look for a date in between now and what would be the second reading, at that second council meeting in September, look for a date to have another work session.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. I'm going to go to Jason Green and try to figure out how to actually handle this one, because it's really not your main.
It's a motion to continue to a date to be determined, but I would caution the council that this is first reading of an ordinance. You have to have a minimum of five days that intervenes between first and second reading. So, your timeframe to hold that special meeting is very limited if first reading is not approved tonight.
Yep. Alderman Chapman, you still have the floor, sir.
I think the council sees where I'm trying to head. I'm trying to make sure that everyone has whatever conversation they need, and make whatever motions they want to make. Then, just to appeal to the council, I would ask that we approve first reading tonight as is, and then still have a budget work session down here on the floor, where those sorts of substantive motions can be made, and then we can deal with them in that fashion, so at least we get through first reading tonight. So, I would make, I'm not sure if I can...
I think what you probably want to do is withdraw your motion, then. Okay, very good.
I didn't withdraw anything.
No, what I'm suggesting is...
The mayor said, "I didn't withdraw." I withdraw the motion.
Thank you. And that's all right with the seconded? Okay. We are on the motion to amend. The motion to amend is to remove the CPI. Discussion on the motion to amend only, please, because what we're going to do is, we're going to, when I say dispose of, we're going to either vote yes or no on the motion to amend, and then we'll go back to the original motion, and then there can be further discussion on the motion, whether or not it's the original motion or an amended motion. With that, let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hadcock.
I appreciate Mr. Wyffenbach bringing this up on the CPI. I think it's important to have a discussion on it. I think I've been going back and forth, in a sense, on this, because I had went through the budget, and that, believe it or not, I did this this weekend, and I met with a lady on Monday, and I found some other stuff in our budget, maybe that we need to have discussion about. So, on this amendment, I believe what Mr. Wyffenbach and where he's trying to go is very important, and I think there needs to be more discussion. I will approve first reading, and then on that, hopefully, we can have a meeting on this, and we can discuss a little bit more of why I'm going where I'm at, and other people, on their discussions on this, to make it make more sense to me and other people of what we're doing on this budget at this time.
Let's go to, let's go Alderman Aaron Costello.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm in favor of passing first reading and scheduling a work session. These conversations, I'd say they're challenging, is being nice to say, you know, to each, try and speak our piece with two turns. So, I'm in favor of passing first reading and scheduling a work session, so we can have another conversation about CIP, and hopefully have some more questions answered between now and then.
Very good. Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Lloyd Lacray.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not in support of the motion on the floor. I do think we need another work session, and that's why I added to the General Counsel person's report, is discussion on the budget and strategic planning, because I think the budget, the way it sits right now, was perfect for doing a planning, strategic plan for the future. We talked about, well, I'll save it. I'm not going to get out of line. I'll save it for my report, so. But I'm not, I'm straying off. But, so, I won't support the motion on the floor, but I will support first reading of the ordinance as it is.
Okay, thank you. Let's go to Alderwoman Karen Olson.
I won't be in support of the motion on the floor either, but I will vote for the following, if this is not passed, for approval of the first reading.
Okay, very good. Let me ask the procedural questions. Anyone wish to speak before Alderman Wyffenbach speaks for a second time? So, please turn on your light. If not, Alderman Wyffenbach, you have the floor, sir.
Mr. Mayor, thank you, and I appreciate it. I can support, I would be willing to, if it's okay with the second, to pull my motion off the floor. I will not support first reading, obviously, but I do, I do agree with a work session, as long as it's recorded, and the people in the public can see what we're talking about, because we're spending their money. So, I will support that, as long as we have some level of, it's a broadcast or something on television, so people can see that we have necessities that are being funded, and then we have what we have been referred to as the wish list. So, I will remove my motion from the floor, if that's okay with the second.
If that's all right with the second. Okay. So, the Chair will rule that the motion hasn't been withdrawn. We're back to the original motion, and that is for approval of first reading. Any further discussion on that motion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed?
No.
Motion passes with two no's from Alderman Wyffenbach and Alderman Quaker. Let's make sure the record reflects that it was the revised ordinance that was passed out by Mr. Preston. Okay, well, I just want to make sure that it's on the record for that. Alderman Chapman, did you have something else to add, or?
I do.
I know where you're going. Please, the floor is yours.
I thank Alderman Wyffenbach for withdrawing that motion, and I would ask the mayor, or through the mayor's office, through K, that we schedule a work session between now and second reading.
I'll have K get together with council leadership. We'll come up with a date. Okay? Anything else? Deb, did you have anything else to add?
Just one more thing, sir. We have an ordinance 5533 that has been changed, and to make sure that you all know that the ordinance and some of the stuff is changed. It's not the same as what we've been handing out. So, just so you all know, that this copy is different than what you've had in the past.
Right, and, very good. Thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you.
And that was reflected in the motion. So, very good. That does take us to item number 80. Alderwoman Olson, if you could read in item number 80, please. Item number 80?
First reading of ordinance 5534, allowing department directors to enter into contracts up to $25,000 with a single vendor without prior city council approval, by amending section 3.04.090 of the Rapid City Municipal Code. Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion, second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 13 was a resolution that did something very similar, although it related to public works contracts, and this is an ordinance. And I guess what I'm wondering is, is why we, a couple of questions, why are we doing it this way, having an ordinance and the resolution? And then regarding item number 80 specifically, I did not see the reporting mechanism in terms of it being posted, having that information posted publicly, as we did with 13.
Okay, very good. Sorry about that. So, to Jason Green, city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item 13 was the consultant selection process, and that was adopted by the council by resolution, so it's appropriate to amend that by resolution. Item 80, which is the current item before the council, is required to be in ordinance form, and it exists today in ordinance form. The only thing that's changing here is the dollar amount changing from $15,000 to $25,000. The reason for the change is to continue to match the requirements of state bid law, and that was what was originally approved by the council when the ordinance was first adopted.
Okay. And if, I think, I know where Alderman Quaker's going to go, as far as the reporting requirement that was on 13, you'd like to see that included here, as far as a posting on the website?
Yes, and I would like to amend the ordinance to require that reporting. Is that appropriate to offer to that amendment, to this ordinance?
Jason?
I need to review the title here. I don't believe it would be appropriate to do with this ordinance, because the title is specific to the dollar amount of the authority, but it's something that you certainly could do with a different ordinance. And if the council would direct, I'd be happy to prepare that ordinance and bring it back for first reading.
We'll just make it happen.
Okay, because I, I guess I would, between now and second reading, I would like to have a summary, too, and an aggregate total of, you know, of the contracts that we're getting, because these are no bid, these are no bid contracts, do not see the light of day in terms of coming to the city council. And I think it's very important that we have transparency, and that transparency be required legally. And to not do that, I think, is a mistake. So, if that information can be brought forward, I mean, if there's only a couple of these here, then...
Let's go to Jason Green, city attorney.
As far as compiling the dollar amount, I'd have to look to Mr. Preston on that. I think that we can identify the ones that have been approved through this process, but I don't know about the, if the data is readily available to be compiled. I would assume it is, but I don't want to speak for the finance officer on that.
We'll get that information for a second reading.
Or just by department would be fine.
Okay. And there again, Sam, even though it's not part of the motion, I'll just direct staff to post everything online, so we'll get that taken care of. Okay, motion on the floor is on item number 80, which is first reading of ordinance 5534. Is for approval. Any further discussion on that motion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Item number 81, please.
First reading of ordinance 5536, an ordinance amending section 17.06 of chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, rezoning the within-described property as requested by the City of Rapid City for rezoning from no-use district to public district, in property generally described as being located east of South Valley Drive and south of South Dakota Highway 44. My motion is for approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Item 82, please.
First reading ordinance 5537, an ordinance amending section 17.06 of chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, rezoning the within-described property as requested by the City of Rapid City for rezoning from no-use district to mobile home residential district on property located at 2801 Cactus Drive. My motion is for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Item 83, first reading of ordinance 5538, an ordinance amending section 17.06 of chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, rezoning the within-described property as requested by, a request by City of Rapid City for rezoning from no-use district to mobile home district, excuse me, to mobile home residential district, property located at 2804 East Fairmont Street. My motion is for approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Item 84, please.
It's a request by Dream Design International for preliminary plat on property located It's a request by Dream Design International for preliminary plat on property located southeast of the intersection of Cheyenne Boulevard and North Elkville Road. My motion is for approval with stipulations.
Second. We have a motion, second for approval, stipulations. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item eighty-five, please.
A request by PLM Land Development LLC for a preliminary plat on lot thirteen B of block two of PLM subdivision, generally described as being located at the northwest corner of the intersection of Cambria Circle and Enchantment Road. My motion is for approval with stipulations.
We have a motion, second for approval, with stipulations. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item sixty-eight, please.
Authorize the mayor and finance officer to sign the waiver of right to protest a future assessment for the installation of sidewalk along Haynes Avenue as they abut out lot A of Auburn Hills subdivision on property generally described as located at six oh two Auburn Drive. And the motion is for approval.
Do we have a second, please? We have a motion, second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Let's go to Alderman Aaron Costello.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to ask a question of Marcia, if I may.
Go ahead, please.
Marcia, do you have a map available of this area?
I bet she does.
I do not.
This is first reading, isn't it?
This is, uh, assessment agreement, the agreement is linked, not the map. This involves the church property that abuts onto Haynes Avenue, there at Auburn Hills.
And remind me where Auburn Hills is, please?
North on Haynes Avenue, almost to the northern extension of the city, on the west side of Haynes Avenue. The church is at the first entrance.
Okay. I guess without knowing what other sidewalks are in the area, I can't be in favor of this. I'll move, I'll yield the floor for now.
Okay, very good. Motion on the floor is to approve a waiver of right to protest. Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I understand. Staff doesn't usually put an approval on these, but it would be nice to see what we're talking about here. I'm not sure that I understand. Is there any sidewalks in the area there?
Marcia?
There are sidewalks within the Auburn Hills area. However, on Haynes Avenue, there are no sidewalks directly adjacent to this, to the north or the south. There are further south down by Vicky Powers Park, but not at this segment.
This like the beginning, then? Is it, I mean, is it the first lot?
Marcia?
It's the first lot into Auburn Hills, but it would not link up to the others to the south.
Is there any houses there, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead. Marcia?
The church sits on the corner lot and has the existing kind of parsonage building on the lot. And then to the north, there are the larger ten acre tracts that are long skinny lots that run east to west.
You know, I'm gonna just make a recommendation. We don't have a map and we can't see this. Is there any reason, Marcia, that is this time sensitive, where we couldn't continue this for two weeks?
Obviously, they're anxious to resolve it, but I don't believe there's any harm in continuing.
Alderman Wyffenbach, he's still-
I'm going to continue for two weeks.
Second.
Okay. We have a substitute motion and a second. Continue for two weeks. Marcia, is this-
I might suggest you send it back to Public Works Committee, so you could have a full discussion of it.
Okay, is that all right with the motion?
Send it back to Public Works.
Okay, is that all right with the Seconder? Okay, the substitute motion on the floor is to send this back to Public Works. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Let's go to item number eighty-seven. Karen, could you please read that in?
Yes. Item number eighty-seven is a resolution number two thousand nine one one one, approving certain drinking water facility improvements, approving the issuance and sale of a revenue bond to finance directly or indirectly the improvements to the facilities, approving the form of the loan agreement and the revenue bond, and pledging certain revenues and collateral to secure the payment of the revenue bond, and creating special funds and accounts for the administration of funds for operation of the system and retirement of the revenue bond. My motion would be to approve.
Do we have a second, please?
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Discussion on that motion. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item eighty-eight, please.
Authorize mayor and finance officer to sign South Dakota Conservancy District State Revolving Fund Revenue Obligation Loan Agreement. Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Let's go to Jason Green, City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just request that the council's approval be contingent upon the previous item becoming effective. That's one of the things that I have to sign off in, on this one, before, before it will be legally effective.
Jason, why don't you give the language? In other words, contingent upon enactment or-
Contingent upon enact, on item eighty-seven on this agenda becoming legally effective.
Okay. Karen, is that, is that all right with the motion, Mayor?
Sure.
Okay. Is that all right with the Seconder? Okay, everyone clear on the motion? In other words, it has to be contingent upon item number eighty-eight becoming legally effective. Eighty-seven, thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item number eighty-nine, please.
Authorize mayor and finance officer to sign memorandum of understanding with the school district and the Rapid City Performing Arts Coalition. And I guess, Jason?
So, to Jason Green, City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've handed out a hard copy of this item on the dais. The language on it was finalized literally about five o'clock this afternoon. That's the reason it wasn't linked and you didn't have it. Because of that, I'm gonna briefly go through this, so you understand what's contained in this agreement. This is a memorandum of understanding with three parties. The city is one party, the school district is another party, and a coalition of performing arts groups is the third party. The MOU establishes the framework by which the performing arts facility will be constructed at Dakota Middle School. The city's contribution is obviously the twenty-twelve dollars that have been previously identified. The school district is going to donate the land, the location for it. And the performing arts group, it will be responsible for making up any shortfall in the construction costs between the city's contribution and the total cost of the project. In conducting the design of the facility, all three parties will be involved. So the city will have input in the design and construction of the facility. Once it's constructed, there's going to be a five-member board of directors that will be in charge of essentially operating the facility. The city will have the right to appoint one of the five members. The school district will appoint two, and the arts coalition will appoint two. There is language contained within this agreement about scheduling and about the ideas that they want to incorporate into the facility ultimately. Obviously, until such time as that design is final, you don't have a solid number on the cost estimate, and therefore, you don't have a solid number on what the performing arts coalition contribution would be. There are, there's a lease agreement that will be required later on, as well as the formalization of this board of directors. If you look at the very last paragraph prior to the signature blocks, there's a sentence there that I think sums this up very well. "In addition to the contingencies set forth throughout this agreement, this agreement is contingent upon approval of the subsequent formal agreements by the parties and their respective governing bodies." Essentially, this is the first step, and as Mr. Palmer described it to me, it's an agreement to agree in the future. But it's necessary to get the framework in place, so that the whole process can move forward. If you look at the very front page, you see a revised paragraph seven and some additional language that we requested be included. Mr. Palmer informed me today that the school board and the performing arts group are all right with this additional language. What this does is, in the event that there is a default on the part of the coalition, it would assure that the city has the right to step into their shoes or to assign the coalition's rights to another performing arts group, so that the city's investment will be protected. I believe there are members of the school board here and of the performing arts coalitions, if there are other questions that I'm unable to answer. So the recommendation from my office is approval.
Okay, we have a motion, and who was the Seconder on that?
I don't think you had a motion.
Okay, let's get a motion on the floor.
I would make that motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion on that motion? Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I haven't had the time to read this. I'm very uncomfortable voting on it. But I had a question for Jason, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, please.
Does this include, obviously, there's a school district in it, it's, I'm assuming, twenty-twelve partnership here? Is that where the money for the performing arts is coming from?
I'm sorry, go ahead, I'm-
Is this the money that was set aside for the performing arts theater?
Yes.
Okay.
Three point two five million, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay. My consideration is understanding that some of the other projects that have had these types of partnerships have excluded the private education system from them. And I'm wondering what consideration has been given to the private schools for usage of the, of this performing arts theater?
Jason, do you understand the question? Can you answer that?
I do understand the question. I can't answer it because I was not a part of any of the discussions other than reviewing the draft MOU. There may be other folks here who, who might be able to answer that question.
Can I pose that question for Mr. Warden?
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you.
And there again, Dr. Warden, if you could identify yourself for the record?
Pete Warden, Superintendent Schools, Rapid City. What we see this as is a community performing arts theater. And it only makes sense that it'd be open to the community, which would include the private as well. So I think that would be fine. And the scheduling of it, we could make arrangements for that to occur. It should be a constituent-driven philosophy behind it for the community.
I appreciate that, because that isn't always the way it's been in the past on some of these other projects. And it's excluded or, or had higher fees for the private schools. And in my mind, this is all taxpayer dollars. It's all the same people. And I appreciate that, Mr. Warden, that we have that philosophy. I still haven't had time to read this. How, Jason, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, please.
I can't sit here and say that I can approve this right now, understanding that five o'clock, I was busy, and I got here at six. And, I mean, I don't want to hold something up that makes sense, but at the same time, I am not, I can't support something that I don't understand.
Did you have a question for Jason, or?
I guess, I'm looking for some guidance from our city attorney. I'm-
Jason?
The one thing that I would point out is that before you commit dollars, there's gonna be more agreement that will come forward for council approval and review. So if there is something there, you're gonna have another shot at this.
Mr. Mayor, I understand that. But this is a MOU, and I understand, we put, we held the guy's feet to a fire on a MOU that he signed without having time to go through it all. And that would be my concern. On a different project, he had a MOU memorandum of understanding they signed. That's what we used as the basis to hold him responsible for his fees that he had to pay. So I have some concern that if we sign off on this tonight, that this is what's gonna be held, you know, we're gonna be held to standard. Unfortunately, if I had time to read it, I could vote. I mean, I think it's a great idea. I think that anytime we get the opportunity to do this type of project and synergize our tax dollars and multiply, I think it's awesome. But for, to get a paper at five o'clock and tell me to vote on it tonight without reading it, I'm sorry. I'm uncomfortable with that, so.
Very good. Thank you. Let's go to Alderwoman Karen Olson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of questions.
Carry her away, please.
Does the, does the performing arts coalition have some contractual agreement between the members of the coalition?
Ron, why don't you go ahead and come forward, if you identify yourself for the record? And the question is, is do you have some kind of a written agreement between, I think you have seven, seven groups that are part of the performing arts coalition?
Yes, my name is Ron Reed, and I'm co-chair of the coalition. There is no written agreement at this point. The written agreement would come in the second phase, which creates bylaws and a structure for operation.
Karen, you still have the floor, ma'am.
Thank you. I'm just trying to determine if at this point in time, you have some kind of a legal agreement between those of you who are part of the, of the performance coalition, and that doesn't exist at this point in time?
That's correct.
So that would be, that is part of the process that Jason is alluding to in the future?
Correct.
Okay. I'm very supportive of this. I think it's a, it's a good idea. In answer, my question, would it be a little bit in regard to the question Mr. Wyffenbach asked? In the past, I know that the theater has always been available for rent from entities within the, throughout the community. Is it fair to assume that this is the procedure that will be a part of the use of that facility in the, in the future?
That is, that is correct.
I only ask that at behalf of the Mount Rushmore barber shop course, who loves the acoustics of your hall.
Yes.
Okay. I'm in support of the motion, and I'm comfortable voting on this, because I do believe that we will have a point in time in which we, a more solidified agreement, we, that council will be able to look at. And I think the efforts, the joint efforts that have gone forward thus far speak well of a long process of bringing some entities together who have some common interests. And so I feel comfortable that I can vote on what we have tonight, knowing that in any long-term agreements, the city will have another opportunity to vote on those as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hadcock.
Just a question. Number one would be for twenty-twelve procedures. This usually, we were always talking about that on other projects. Is this the procedure we usually go through to start the process for using of twenty-twelve money? And on a project that we would be, is this basically on the DOL and other things? Is this what the procedure we have done for them to follow?
So, to Jason Green, City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My recollection is that on the DOL, we had preliminary agreement that dealt with design. And that's a city-owned facility, so that's a little different. I think the procedure that you see in front of you today mimics very well the procedure that was used on the community centers that the city constructed in partnership with the school districts.
Okay. And just a question. And if anything is above and beyond this, who will be taking care of the extra cash flow?
Mr. Green?
The, the city's contribution is limited to three point two five million dollars. Anything over and above that will be the responsibility of the coalition.
Okay. And they have an understanding that they have to fundraise and do what they need to do if this is above and beyond?
I believe they do, and I believe that's the reason they're looking forward to this, to the approval of this agreement.
And just maybe the school board president, if he has a minute, if I could ask him a question?
Go ahead and ask a question, please.
Yes, Ms. Hadcock.
Thank you for coming, Mr. Westorm. Based on this agreement, have you had much opposition on your open meetings on this proposition at this time?
Not on this agreement.
If you could just identify yourself for the record, please?
I'm Westorm, president of school board.
Thank you.
Not at this time.
And your board members, you would say, would be in favor of this, going with a joint facility with this, using the twenty-twelve money of the city's three point two five?
We voted seven zero at our last meeting to do that correctly.
And I'm sorry, I don't read the papers as much as I probably should. And I just appreciate you guys coming, and I thank you for that information. It makes a difference when you guys don't have the opposition and your board feels this is important for the city to move forward. So I thank you for coming tonight, sir.
Thank you for your help.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderwoman Aaron Costello.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question is probably for the representatives of the performing arts coalition. I'm wondering how the facilities, the vision of the facilities at the Performing Arts Center will differ from what's currently available at the DOL Theater?
Mr. Reed?
Well, the DOL Theater, when it was designed, has really no stage space. It's a portable stage with a multi-use, a room that can be used for a variety of purposes. This will be an actual performance theater, permanent seating with a full stage, ultimately dressing rooms, et cetera, which do not exist at all. In addition, the size, of course, of both of them are considerably different.
You have the floor, sir.
How considerably different, if I may?
The DOL, I'm getting, remembering, trying to remember, but I think it's two hundred to two fifty, something like that in seating. This will seat eight to nine hundred.
Real minifemant of lying here. Was there any discussion during the remodel of the DOL about including the Performing Arts Center with the DOL Theater? I'm sorry if I missed that.
Put it this way, that, let me just chime in-
Without a laughter, a yes will suffice, and I'll just go from there. Must have been some conversation. Thank you. Are you on the floor?
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. I have, I have several questions. And I guess, first of all, I, I think that it would have been best to have had this, this agreement, you know, especially since this is a twenty-five year agreement, be linked to the public agenda, so that could be read by the public. And council members prior to attending the meeting want the record to reflect that item eighty-nine, this item, has no link. And we've been provided the agreement, but it wasn't until tonight that we received it. So with that being said, I do have several questions. The first question is, will a coalition, the coalition is divided, so we'll have a board of directors, will the board of directors keep minutes and hold, and hold public meetings? How will, how is this structured?
Jason, do you want to answer that, or Mr. Reed?
I think I can answer that. I believe that this will be an entity that will be required to hold public meetings and keep, keep minutes.
Okay. Is it fair to say that they'll be required to comply with all the open meeting laws?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. And then, operation and maintenance costs, item number nine seems to, or point number nine seems to indicate that the city will not be asked to contribute operation and maintenance costs. But I wanted to make sure that this agreement does not require the city to have another budget item for the ongoing O and M costs.
That's correct.
And is, has the coalition committed to not asking the city for a, for a line item?
I-
I mean, is it, is it the plan to include this in next year's, in next year's budget to, to add fifty thousand or a hundred thousand or whatever to keep on the light bills and all these other things for this entity?
Mr. Green?
I certainly cannot speak for the coalition. What I can tell you is that this agreement does not require the city to provide any funding whatsoever for operation and maintenance. Now, let me qualify that. If the coalition were to, once the facility is built, were to breach the lease or dissolve, the city would have the option to take over the coalition's rights under the lease. But you wouldn't have the requirement to do so.
So I'd like to ask Mr. Reed a question.
Sure.
Mr. Reed, is it, is it the plan, you or your organization, to your knowledge- Mr. Reed, is it, is it the plan, you or your organization, to your knowledge, to ask the city for ongoing participation for operation and maintenance costs beyond the $3.25 million that was identified for construction?
Mr. Reed?
Not at this time.
What does that mean? Are you committed to running this without further assistance from the city tax?
I'm not a fortune teller to tell you what will happen into the future, but it is not in the current plan. The plan is that the Coalition members would, along with the school district, would be supporting the facility and would not be asking for additional city funds.
Let me answer it this way, all the discussions, at least I've been party to, is the fact that the city would be under absolutely no obligation, or there was there any discussion of the city ever providing any O&amp;M costs. So I mean, that has never been part of the discussion, at least that I've been party to.
That's correct.
And if we have an event that has, I understand that there may be some overlap with the DALL, but for the most part, the functions of the Performing Arts Center are, for the most part, completely different than the functions of the DALL Fine Arts.
That is correct.
Because, one of the reasons, one of the things I want to state publicly is, at one point, there was, there was some disputes between the DALL and the Performing Arts Group, but largely that has been resolved in these two facilities. They're gonna be within a few blocks of each other, these will not be competing, these will be complementary.
Correct.
Fair statement?
Fair statement.
Okay, so if there's an event with 800 to 900 people attending at the new Performing Arts Facility, and then 200 to 250 at the DALL, just a few blocks away, how has, how will parking, has that, has that been addressed?
That has been addressed. There is ample, there's considerable parking along Columbus Street currently. There are parking lots adjacent to the school, both behind and to the east end of the building. And the school district has some future plans for additional parking as they evolve their plan with the future use of Dakota.
Mr. Quaker, you still have the floor, sir.
And one final comment, and this is the history buff in me coming out, it is, it is well-known, or perhaps not so well-known anymore, but that President Coolidge, in that general vicinity, made his famous announcement back in 1928, that he was not going to run for president again. And I think that that's an interesting bit of history. It would sure be nice to have a little plaque in the front of the building that shows kind of a historical marker, if you will, built into the, into the facility, and kind of our efforts to help preserve the memory of this community's history as time goes on. I would just ask that be considered, maybe that's already been discussed.
And just to answer your question, the construction of anything that happens within the building will be under the supervision of the district. And so we are there as professional guidance in terms of the needs, of meeting the needs of the performing arts, but the building and the, and the facility itself is, is the school district's.
And then I have one final comment, Mayor.
Please go ahead.
And I'm going to support this tonight on the condition that, what I don't want to hear tomorrow is other people coming forward and saying, "We didn't have a chance to read this, we've been blindsided by this, I've been skim reading this, I don't see anything that could blindside anybody." What I like, would like to do under parliamentary procedures is give notice of intent to reconsider, as we did once, you know, or twice before. And Jason, if you could help me out with that, the way I can vote for this tonight, and if something comes up that's a problem, then we can reconsider this legally and not run into a bind.
The appropriate way to deal with this is go ahead and vote on it, and immediately after, register your intent to reconsider.
Do I need a motion to register my intent?
Nope, you'll do that actually after the motion passes, Sam. Then if you'll turn on your light, then you can actually make that, make that statement, and then that will serve as your intent to reconsider. Then, at the next meeting, if you're satisfied, you can either take it up, or you don't have to take it up, you can actually die on the floor there, but that reserves your right to actually reconsider.
Thank you.
Okay. Additional comments? Let's go to Alderwoman Lloyd La Croix.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to piggyback on what Sam just said, that, you know, between the DALL and Performing Arts, they complement each other. And also with this Main Street squared, Sixth Street reconsidered that they're talking about, this fits imperfect. And I think this is a perfect home for them. I think it's been a long haul for the theater group, but I think they're finally getting there. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderwoman Ron Weifenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity to speak again, and being as this is a 2012 project, I'm reading item number four, the second sentence, and it said, "The parties acknowledge the amount of money the Coalition can contribute to the cost constructing the facility will be limited to the amount of money the Coalition is able to obtain through fundraising." We've required every other 2012 project to come forward with their funding, the funding they had available. I would like to ask Mr. Reed what funding they have right now.
Mr. Reed, can you give us a report as far as your fundraising to date?
We have $350,000 currently, and we have not started any kind of an outside campaign.
The other question I have, and I appreciate Mr. Quaker's ability to allow us to vote on this and support, because I support the project overall. I don't support the idea of not having this available to the public for reading. And I understand the reconsideration motion would be probably the most appropriate, but my question is, would be for Mr. Green, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, please.
Is, this project's been on the burner for 10 years, and now we got one hour to decide. I don't understand, did I miss something? Was I sleeping?
Mr. Green.
I'm not sure I understand the question.
I'm saying, why is it such a hurry that we don't have time to review this better? And I, I think I can get around it with the reconsideration, but I think there may be some people out there that want to have some input into this contract, or whatever the case may be, and I'm not sure. This process has been going on for quite some time, to my understanding, to build this Performing Arts Theater. And now, all of a sudden, we get it at five o'clock and we're told to make a judgment call, and I know, I can't tell you what time it is, because that clock says quarter to five. I know that's wrong, so I'm not sure that I understand it, Mr. Mayor, I'd just like an explanation.
I'm gonna turn to Jason Green, you understand the question?
Well, I think I understand the concern that's being expressed in the lack of time to review the document. And, you know, that's really a result of, you know, the inability of myself and Mr. Palmer to connect. We've been playing phone tag literally for probably a week and a half on this. As soon as we got it done today, I brought it forward, and I recognize that it's at the last hour. The one thing that I would reemphasize is that you're gonna have several more opportunities to address this issue specifically before you have to spend a dime on the project.
Would a continuation motion be out of the question here? I mean, how would that affect this project? I mean, I would, I would pose that question to Mr. Reed.
Mr. Reed, you understand the question? Would a continuation motion create issues?
Only in the sense that we're, I guess, nothing, I can't say no, that it would have any major effect outside of the fact that we have some outstanding bidding opportunities right now. The sooner that we can proceed, the better opportunities we are to be able to maximize the dollars we have.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderwoman Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I listened and heard a lot of, from the council tonight, I think on this issue, and this has been a long road for the arts in our community. I have a question for Jason, first of all.
Go ahead, please.
I think it's been said enough times that we haven't had the document and we haven't had a chance to really read it. Are you comfortable with the changes in the document?
Jason?
I am, and that's the reason for my recommendation for approval.
I think the council can take some comfort, as Jason pointed out in the last paragraph before the signature block, it says, and I'll just read it, "In addition to the contingencies set forth throughout this agreement, this agreement is contingent on the approval of this agreement and subsequent formal agreements by parties in their respective governing bodies," which will give the city, and the Performing Arts Coalition and the school district, opportunities to have this before all of us again, and all of those agreements must be agreed upon before we really start to move forward. So I'm in support of the agreement. I thank the arts community, the school district, and the city for continuing to stay in the game and continue to work on this item, and I will enthusiastically vote in approval of this.
Very good. Motion on the floor is for approval, any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. I'm gonna go to Alderwoman Sam Quaker.
Help me out, Jason. I might, I'd like to register my intent to reconsider.
To request reconsideration at the next regular meeting.
Yep, and I'll basically, so the chair recognizes that, and you'll have that opportunity. We don't need to vote on it, as long as the chair recognizes it. Very good, thank you, Alderwoman Quaker. Very good, thank you for the discussion, everyone. Alderwoman Olson, could you please read in number 89A? There was an amendment that was added, there should be a separate sheet, I believe. If you could read that in, please.
89A is a covenant agreement between Lesco LLC and the City of Rapid City. And I'm not sure what's.
Marcia.
Marcia, why don't you give me some help with this?
We're requesting authorization for the mayor and finance officer to sign this agreement. It is related to Item 90, which follows on the agenda.
Okay, I would move approval of that, as Marcia describes.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, oh, I'm sorry, Patty Martenson, my apologies, Patty. Let's go to Alderwoman Patty Martenson.
Thank you, Mayor. I know it's a part of the agreement, it says, this will be, will be done when Seeger Drive will need to be reconstructed at some time in the future. Is there any plan at all to reconstruct Seeger Drive at any point in the future?
There is no current plan to do that, it is not in the capital improvement plan there, it's not scheduled in our timeframes.
I cannot be in support of this, because it seems like we're signing an agreement that goes into a black hole of time.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderwoman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. I think Alderwoman Martenson raises an important issue. Seeger Drive is, has a problem, that is, it is not a very good street, and it appears that there is no timeframe on this, and we literally could be in a situation where this is just never taken care of. So I would also like to know who Lesco LLC is, do we know who Lesco is?
Marcia.
Mr. Nash is the individual who's been dealing with the city, Scott Nash. He's here, if there's specific questions.
Sam, you still have the floor, sir.
And Mr. Nash, if you don't mind my asking, would you let me know who the members of...
Good evening, Scott Nash, I represent Lesco LLC. This was at the Public Works the other day, I think, that you left during this discussion, but the Seeger Street is in pretty poor repair in the area of Angel Brothers and my property, so what we're asking to do, there's really nothing to match into, is that we match with asphalt at this time, and then when Seeger's redone, we can redo this.
Scott, I believe the question, go back to Sam Quaker, I think he was asking who the partners of the LLC were.
Myself and Lee Arlen.
Okay, thank you. Alderwoman Quaker, you still have the floor, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Additional discussion? Let's go to Alderwoman Lloyd La Croix.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I was in agreement of this covenant because of, as the fact that he just, he mentioned is that there's, you know, another's business on that street, their approach is the same way, and he's agreeing that when, when and if the road gets reconstructed the way it should be, that he has no problems in putting the concrete in and doing it, the curb and got it and doing it the way it should be. And I think it's only fair to do it, that's why I agreed with the covenant agreement. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderwoman Erin Costello.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think the issue here is not this driveway issue, is the disrepair of Seeger Drive, and that's what needs to be moved on. And I echo Alderwoman La Croix's statements, where, you know, when you read through this agreement, you know, it states all the problems that are, the issue with Seeger Drive, the issue with putting in the driveway right now. And I think it would just be a huge waste of money to have him put in a reinforced concrete driveway right now. And just to reiterate, it's in the agreement that will read, that it will be redone as reinforced concrete when Seeger Drive is redone. So, once again, the issue is not his driveway being made of concrete, the issue is the disrepair of Seeger Drive. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is for approval to authorize the mayor and the finance officer to sign the covenants. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion passes with one no from Patty Martenson. Thank you, everyone. Item number 90, that'd be Erin Costello, could you read in item number 90, please?
Certainly, Mr. Mayor. Item number 90 is to approve with the stipulation that the applicant enter into a covenant agreement to install a concrete driveway at the time Seeger Drive is reconstructed, a request for exception to the requirement to install a reinforced concrete driveway at 2303 Seeger Drive is legally described as that. I move for approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval, any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item number 91, please.
Mayor, we had one no on that one from...
I'm sorry, did we have a no?
I have a no, yes.
Oh, I'm, my apologies. But the record reflected, we did have one no vote, that was from Alderwoman Patty Martenson. Thank you.
Item number 91, a request by Ken First for K-1 Construction Incorporated to consider an application for a vacation of utility and drainage easement on an area generally described as being located at 6509 Seminole Lane, and I yield to the floor.
Marcia, do you have a recommendation?
It was forwarded on to you without recommendation, as we not had time to complete a review of the drainage information that was coming in at that time. We've received it and we're recommending approval of the vacation.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Thank you. Any discussion on that motion? Motion is for approval. Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Item 92, please.
Item number 92 is to approve with staff stipulations, a request by Ferber Engineering Company for KR Toyland LLC to consider an application for a vacation of a portion of a major drainage easement in an area generally described as being located northwest of the intersection of East Mall Drive and Tish Boulevard, I move for approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second for approval, any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number 93, please.
Item number 93 is recommend denial of a request to have future land use committee meeting minutes recorded and linked to the city website, and I yield to the floor.
Can we have a motion, please? Just, can we have a motion?
I motion to do the opposite, so. I move that we...
Turn your mic, can you turn your mic on, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I recommend we uphold the request to have, or I move that we uphold a request to have future land use committee meeting minutes recorded and linked to the city website.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, just for, there again, point of clarification, it's already done. I had the discussions with Marcia Elkins and gave direction to both Marcia Elkins and staff and future land use. What we did was, we talked about logistically how we would do this. At the end of every meeting, when they're done working on their maps, they will approve the revisions to the map that will become part of the record, and it will also be linked on the internet. So, just so you know, it has already been done. But there's nothing wrong with the motion on the floor.
Great.
Okay, with that, we do have Alderwoman Erin Costello, did you wish to speak?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I am, that pleases me. However, it does confuse me a little at the same time, that, once again, we talk about information being dropped in our lap, I mean, it's, maybe it's just I don't quite have the satisfaction of pushing, putting this through, but I appreciate your work, thank you.
Let me explain, this was actually placed on the agenda from Public Works. After that discussion, Marcia and I sat down and we thought it was appropriate. I went ahead and gave direction to the staff, so that's why it's moving forward, I thought it was a good idea to do.
I appreciate that, your proactiveness, Mr. Mayor. And Marcia, thank you very much for recognizing this need.
Let's go to Alderwoman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. So just to clarify, this will be linked along with the other forty-some committees' minutes. I didn't see it out there tonight, or today.
It will be treated like every other committee, there will be a link, typically it'll be through Growth Management's website. Now, keep in mind, the internet, or the website will be changing here within the next two weeks, and we'll be giving a presentation, but it will be an obvious link to actually get to these minutes. Marcia?
We've only had one meeting since that direction was given, and...
We've only had one meeting since that direction was given, and so those minutes have not been approved by the committee yet, so they'll be posted after that.
Thank you.
Okay. Motion on the floor is to ask that future land use committee takes, uh, minutes and also that those minutes be linked to the website. Any further discussion on that motion? Seeing none. All's in favor. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Mr. Preston bids.
Thank you, Mayor. We have, uh, four items on the bid list this evening. The first one is a sweep of room refills for the Street Division. We received three bids as listed. They're listed by unit price and extended, extended price. Staff is recommending accepting the bid from Old Dominion Brush Company Incorporated with the extended price as listed. The total is eighteen thousand seventy dollars.
So, move. We have a motion and a second to accept the bid from Old Dominican Brush Company. I was gonna say Old Full.
Old Dominion.
Yeah. Uh, for eighteen thousand seventy dollars. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes.
The next, uh, item is enhanced corrosion inhibited liquid magnesium chloride for Street Division. We received two bids as listed. Staff is recommending we take this to the September fifteenth Public Works meeting for recommendation.
So, move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to continue this or actually send us back to the Public Works, uh, meeting on the fifteenth. Any discussion on that motion? Let's go to Alderwoman Deb Adcock.
Is there any estimate that what this might be costing for this? By chance, um, Robert Ellis would, who I'd be asking that to?
Robert, real quick, there again, motion on the floor is to send us back to Public Works. Robert, do you understand the question?
Well, I think I do. The advertising authority was thirty-two thousand and the engineer's estimate was also thirty-two thousand.
Okay. I, I'm sorry I couldn't see it from here. I apologize.
Okay.
Turn around. I don't, I need glasses. I, I, that's a big item, so I'm glad we're sending it back and just kinda doing what they need to do. So, thank you.
Motion on the floor is to actually, uh, send this back to the Public Works Committee meeting in September fifteenth. Any further discussion on that motion? Seeing none. All in favor, whoops, let's go to Karen Woman. Karen Woman, yeah. Alderwoman Karen Olson.
Right. So, the item we are approving is item number ninety-six on the link.
We're, we're on item number ninety-five, and that is, uh, dealing with, uh, magnesium chloride. And the motion is to send it back to Public Works.
All right, I see.
Got it?
I got the two things together. Thank you.
Very good. Motion on the floor is send this back to Public Works at the nine fifteen meeting. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All's in favor. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Item number ninety-six, please. Mr. Preston.
The next item is the Founders Park Plaza. We received one bid from Skull Construction Services, and staff is recommending accepting that bid at a hundred and three thousand four hundred dollars.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderwoman Karen Olson.
Well, the numbers, it looks to me like between the link and the paper copy aren't quite the same.
Okay.
But we are talking about Founders Park. In the, um, paper copy, it looks to me like Founders Park is ninety-six. And in the linked, it's ninety-seven. Maybe I'm wrong, 'cause I, I was reading the other one wrong.
She's right.
I'm just wanting to make sure we have the same item.
On, just Founders Park, and Karen is correct. It is...
Yes, that, that we are off by one number from the summary to the...
The important thing is the content is the same, right?
Yes, and, and we're working off the agenda, so we're dealing with item number ninety-six.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. Let's go to Alderwoman, or I'm sorry, Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. I support this, uh, motion, uh, on Founders Park. I do think that it is appropriate to add that as the city makes more of an investment in this area and there's more and more traffic in this area. We have, we really need to figure out the intersection of Founders Park Drive and Omaha. It is absolutely impossible to make, uh, a left turn either direction when there is oncoming traffic also trying to make a left turn. You cannot see, and we will have a tragedy there unless this is taken care of. There needs to be a signal. We planned on a signal, um, all along, and we need to work with Department of Transportation to put that signal in before we, before we have a tragedy occur there. Thank you.
Thank you. We have been having ongoing conversations with the DOT since they are the controlling entity on Omaha Street. But thank you for your comments. Let's go to Alderman Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, we started off the special council meeting tonight talking about vision and what the community could look like in the future. And, um, somewhere in that discussion, it was mentioned that, um, the Thursday night events were, you know, the brainchild of the Leadership Rapid City class of two thousand seven. And I just remember a number of years ago facilitating a retreat for Leadership Rapid City class prior to that. And, um, each class is given a task of coming up with some sort of project for the future of Rapid City. And this particular Leadership Rapid City class, uh, came up with several projects that they've worked on and completed some of them. But Ann Stanton was in that class and had a vision that Founders Park should be created as we see. And she almost stood alone that night, uh, as I remember. So, I like to say just congratulations, and sometimes the price of leadership is loneliness. And thank you for standing there alone and continuing to encourage others to get on board. And as a result, here we are approving a bid for, uh, a layout of the, um, the, um, foundation in the first Rapid City layout. So, Ann, congratulations, and I too, uh, look forward to this project going forward. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is to accept the bid from Skull Construction Services for one hundred and three thousand four hundred dollars. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none. All's in favor. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Thank you. Mr. Preston?
The next item is the West Main Street Creek Drive Bridge Repair Projects. We received five bids as listed. Staff is recommending accepting the bid from Seiko Construction Incorporated in amount of twenty-nine thousand nine hundred ninety-four dollars and sixty-three cents.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Motion on the floor is to award the contract to Seiko Construction for twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-four dollars and sixty-three cents. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All's in favor. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. You have one more, Mr. Preston?
We have an informal quote, Mayor, if I could read that in.
Go ahead.
The informal quote is for the Locust Street and Fairmont Boulevard water main reconstruction. We received three quotes as listed. Staff is recommending accepting the quote from Main Line Contract Incorporated in amount of twenty-one thousand three hundred ninety-two dollars.
So, move. We have a motion and a, and a second to accept the in, the informal quote and award that to Main Line Contracting for twenty-one thousand nine, is it three hundred ninety-two dollars?
Three hundred ninety-two, yes, sir.
Don't have my glasses.
Yes, sir.
It's getting tough. Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none. All's in favor. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. That does take us to, let's make sure we don't miss anything here. We are on to motions for delivery of items from committee. Item number ninety-nine. Let's see, I'm gonna ask Alderman, uh, let's see, Costello to read that in, and actually, I'm gonna go to Jason Green to ask for the appropriate motion, 'cause this is something that's a little bit, uh, atypical. We, we haven't dealt with many of these. So, Jason, give us some, uh, basically, the, the appropriate motion.
Thank you, Mayor. The, the item is on, under the motion, uh, for delivery of items from committee. So, the only motion that's appropriate, uh, I guess there could be two motions that are appropriate. The first would be to direct the committee to deliver the item, and another motion that would be in order would be to table. The, the, the purpose of this is to have the committee bring forward an item they have not acted upon at the direction of the whole council. My understanding and my recollection is that this item was continued at committee for thirty days. So, if the council wants to see it before then, the motion would need to be to direct the legal and finance committee to deliver the item.
Okay, very good. This is what, uh, I'm accustomed to calling a smokeout. In other words, this is an emo, this is a motion that would direct a subcommittee of the council to deliver an item to the full council. Now, keep in mind, uh, Jason talked about two different motions. They can either approve it or table it. Keep in mind, uh, either approving it or tabling it does nothing to the original motion. The motion on the floor is whether or not you want to direct the committee to deliver the item. That's the only thing on the agenda. Okay? With that, I'm sorry for the long dissertation here, but I thought, thought it was important to, that everybody know what, what the, uh, topic was.
Indeed. Item number ninety-nine, introduction and first reading of ordinance number five-five-zero-one to prohibit the feeding of wildlife and water fowl in the City of Rapid City by establishing chapter six point one-six of the Rapid City Municipal Code. And, uh, I move to direct the legal and finance committee to deliver the item.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Very good. That is an appropriate motion. Discussion on that motion. Now, there again, keep in mind, this is not a, this is not a discussion about the original motion. This is a discussion about whether or not the council wishes to direct the committee, the legal and finance committee, to actually deliver this item to the full council. And, and that's the ordinance, uh, to the council. So, that's what we're gonna stick to, whether or not the council wishes to bring this up at this time. With that, let's go to Alderman Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just clarification. I, my understanding was that we could do a couple of things. We could have the subcommittee or the legal and finance committee deliver the item, or we could table the item. Those are two different things where I thought the mayor said only, this is only about the motion to delivery.
Right.
Or deliver.
Yeah, and that's exactly right. Keep in mind, the only thing that's appropriate, since this is actually a motion to deliver items from a committee, if you pass the motions on the floor, all you're doing is asking or directing the legal and finance committee to move this forward with one of three recommendations, either to approve, deny, or move forward without a recommendation. And if the committee itself cannot come up with a recommendation, it will automatically be brought forward to the committee with no recommendation. If you table the motion that's on the floor, the only thing that you're saying is, we wanna stick with the original motion as far as the timeline, as far as moving this process, moving this item to the council as originally proposed by the council itself. Is that fair, Jason?
The substantive ordinance is not before the council. The question before the council is when will you have the substantive ordinance? At this point, legal and finance has said, we're not gonna do anything with it for at least thirty days. If the council as a whole wants to discuss the substance at your next meeting, this is the procedural mechanism to allow that to occur.
One other question, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, please.
How did we get here? If the legal and finance committee said, let's, we wanna see something in thirty days, how did we get to this point where someone, some entity, some, how, how did we get here?
I'm gonna go to Jason, well, I'm gonna let Jason Green explain it to it. Just, you know, uh, we actually have, and we don't use typically this portion of our agenda, but it's right on our agenda and it is an appropriate action to ask for the delivery of an item. And that's actually within the council's rules. But I'm gonna let Jason expand on that.
Mr. Mayor, if I could clarify, I'm not questioning if it's in our rules. I'm saying, who asked that it be delivered?
Very good. Jason?
Mr. Quaker sent an email and asked that this be added to the agenda. Can I...
Okay. Anything else? Okay, very good. Let's go to Alderwoman Karen Olson.
Thank you, Mr. Mr. Mayor. In regard to this, the legal and finance committee made a motion to continue this for thirty days to October. Um, there were two reasons that I requested that. Um, I am a part of the Urban Wildlife Committee from which this, um, ordinance originates. And two important experts on this subject were unable to attend in the month of September. Both of whom have been active participants in all the discussion in regard to this issue, who have a great deal of expertise. One of whom is Art Smith, who is actually, um, lives in Pierre. Both of those, both he and John Kent could be a part of the discussion if it took place in October. In addition, I have been a part of it in shepherding this, um, motion, this ordinance forward and this whole program forward in behalf of the Urban Wildlife Committee. And I am, in fact, not going to be able to, I'm going to be absent during September, so I would not be a part of the discussion. And, um, I feel very, um, strongly about the issue. And I feel, um, to not have, um, my part in the discussion, I think, doesn't do justice to the full, um, depth and gravity of the issue. And so, while I do believe there, um, that first reading is important, I would urge my colleagues, colleagues to, um, to, to allow the continuation motion with legal and finance. And then it would allow a full discussion with those who have a great deal of expertise on the subject to participate in the legal and finance committee and then participate in the larger discussion before the city council, both of which, in my view, should take place in October. And, um, there's been some discussion about concerns about, um, parts of the ordinance, particularly about, um, the, the monetary fee for, um, violation. And there's been some suggestions to change that, and I would heartily support that. But I would certainly like to have that discussion take place in, in November or in, in October, rather than, in my view, a premature discussion that doesn't allow a full discussion because you don't have the expertise of the folks from Game Fish and Parks.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, to explain, um, why I added this item to the agenda for delivery. Uh, my goal is not to rush the ordinance. But my goal is to amend it to be, uh, a twenty-five dollar, uh, fine or less. The five hundred dollar fine, uh, is, uh, distracting from the debate. And it's hard to know if the opposition, uh, that, that we're hearing, at least that I'm hearing, is due to the desire to keep feeding the ducks or if it's due to the concern over the five hundred dollar fine. And the five hundred dollar fine is excessive. And so, my goal is, is to try to, uh, uh, help the debate along by, um, getting rid of the unnecessary, um, uh, fine and have, have it be something much more reasonable. And that's why I ask either for, um, uh, I don't know, it's kinda awkward to ask the council to commit to an amendment when it's not actually on the agenda, so that's why I'm asking that we, uh, bring this out of committee, amend it, and then we can send it back for further discussion. And then we can have a pure debate on the merits of not feeding the waterfall. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, I have another light on from Alderwoman Karen Olson, and there again. Let's keep in mind, the motion on the floor is whether or not to deliver this item to the council. So, if we can try and restrict the comments to that, I'd appreciate it. Let's go to, let's see, I'm gonna go to Alderman Malcolm Chapman, who has not had the opportunity to speak yet. You did? Okay, let's, okay, let's go to Alderwoman Karen Olson.
Um, I understand, um, Alderman Quaker's concerns about this, and I think there'll be ample time and I believe support for the very thing he's discussing. But I just think that the full discussion should start with the very beginning, and that includes the expertise that's necessary to fully discuss this. And so, I would, um, I thi, I believe what I'm asking for is to defeat the motion on the floor and follow the recommendation from the legal and finance committee, which was to extend this, continue this item for thirty days.
Yep, very good. Thank you. I am going to go to Alderman Ron Wyfembach, who has not had the opportunity to speak this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'm hoping someone can answer me when this first came on the agenda, this duck feeding thing. I think we've been talking about this for...
Jason, do you have a timeline?
I, I think what we should do is put a price tag on these ducks of about a million dollars apiece. We'd have this conversation done in about ten minutes.
Okay, thank you. Let's go to Alderman Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, um, I, I understand what Alderman Quaker's trying to do, and, and I think that's, that's fine, to just move the process along at some point. But I, I'm looking at the council policies and procedures, and, and it does say that i, if we use this smokeout mechanism that i, it should, it has to be delivered by the next meeting. So, we couldn't smokeout and then continue it to May or, I mean, continue it to October, so it has to be the next meeting. But then, as I turn the book to the side and I read the side note, it says, "Smokeout." If you want to bring a matter out of committee that was killed there, make a motion to deliver the issue for consideration. It doesn't say if you want to bring a matter out of the committee that was continued there. Am I just caught up into semantics here, or is this the way that you bring an item that was previously killed at the committee level? And then you bring it and you smoke it out, just based on what our rules and policies and procedures say? So, I'd like some clarification.
I'm gonna go to Jason Green, but, but typically, uh, I believe it's, uh, applicable to both. Because what can happen is, is, first of all, you can have an item dying committee, and if the, if the council as a whole wants to take it up, they can order it to actually be delivered. The second thing is, and it's never happened here, but I'm gonna tell you, in, in the state legislature, uh, what can happen is a committee will hold a piece of leg- legislature, what can happen is a committee will hold a piece of legislation hostage, and so the only way to actually get it up to the full body is to actually smoke it out. With that, I'm gonna go to Jason Green. Did I miss something there, Jason?
No, I agree with everything you said. I would just add that I think that the notes that exist on the side are just additional explanation, they're not official parts of the rules. So I do believe that the smoke-out provision is appropriate. Anytime the council wants to direct one of its own subsidiary committees to take action one way or the other.
Okay. Yep, you spelled the word.
Just one other comment, Mr. Mayor. I, I understand what Alderman Quaker's attempting, and again, I don't disagree with it, but I will not vote in favor of the motion, but I will also ask Councilmember Olson that this has been on the agenda for a while, and if it should pass, that we get to the thirty days into October, and if those members can't make it, I think we need to table this item until, I mean, we can't continue to just say, you know, they can't make it, they can't make it. So at some point, I think the item needs to leave our agenda. But I will vote not in favor of the motion that's on the floor.
Very good. I'm gonna go to Alderwoman Deb Hadcock. Motion on the floor is a smoke-out motion. Let's have discussion only about that, please. Alderwoman Deb Hadcock.
My substitute motion is to table.
Okay. Do we have a second? Okay. We have a motion and a second, which is a substitute motion, which is a tabling motion. There is no discussion on a tabling motion. We go directly to a vote. So everyone clear on that? I'm gonna, I'm gonna explain what's gonna happen here. If you vote to table, in essence, what you're saying is you want to leave this item at legal and finance as originally proposed, and actually have it come back, I think it was thirty days was the motion to continue. If you vote, if you vote no, what will happen is we'll go back to the original motion, which is a motion to deliver, a smoke-out. Okay? Everyone clear on that motion? All those in favor of the tabling motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Let's take a roll call, please.
Costello?
No.
LaCroy?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Wyffenbach?
Aye.
Kroger? Hadcock?
Aye.
Waugh?
Aye.
Martinson?
Aye.
Quaker?
No.
Okay, motion passes, eight to two, is that correct? Okay, that was a tabling motion, so that issue has been resolved. The item is tabled. Thank you, everyone. That was a good exercise in parliamentary procedure. Let's not do it again. Okay. Let's see. Let's see, I want to make sure I don't overlook anything. We do have a ninety-nine A, which was an item that was placed on the agenda by Alderman Lloyd LaCroy, and this was a budget report and also strategic planning. We'll give the floor to Alderman Lloyd LaCroy.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I just want to commend the council for their work during the budget process. You know, we had those first three presentations from the department heads, and that went well, and then we had the two budget hearings last week, and I commend the council members who were able to make it to the Monday night meeting. We had eight out of the ten, and on Tuesday, we had ten of the ten present, and the work that they did on those days was outstanding. I do have to admit, by Tuesday, I left a little frustrated, but, you know, in all sense in saying that, the work that the council did during that meeting was pretty outstanding. You know, they, they sent a message that, that they're conservative, they're worried about the sales tax coming in, and they didn't want to take any action. You know, the items that we started going through, you know, I don't really consider them the wish list. There are some really tough issues that we need to address, and that's why I threw this on the council reports, because I think we do get some more work to do. And in hindsight, after sitting back about four or five days after those meetings, it seems like it's the perfect opportunity, what we've been trying to do for three years, is to come up with a strategic, strategic plan for our budget, to get together as a council and find out what's important for us, not only for next year, but we already got the agenda right now, so we can go through it now and start doing the planning. You know, I have to admit, we need to get through second reading. I understand the council's conservative, and we want to take a look at this. We don't have to add and subtract things from the budget to try and get what we want. I think we can plan, prioritize, and need be, we can revisit it, we can do that. And so that's what I kind of wanted to discuss and threw on there. You know, the toughest part about doing the budget is trying to get ten people together at the same time, including staff. And we're gonna try and do that again this time. We're gonna be short one. You know, Karen's got a lined-up vacation due to the week, but, but we're gonna work through that, so we need a special council meeting. We need to, we need to put into our calendars now that we're gonna be, have to do it the twenty-eighth or twenty-ninth of September. So I'd just like the council to kind of set those dates aside, that we may have a special council meeting those days, and we may be back here. When Kay does, sends out the notices for the meetings, you know, we'll all have to try and make the sacrifices we can. We're down to the wire if we want to get discussion before the end of September, so please remember that. I don't know, Alderman Chapman has anything to talk about on strategic planning, but I kind of surprised him with this at the beginning of the meeting too, because, but this has been something that Mr. Chapman's been, been talking about for the last three years, is strategic planning for the budget. And I just think this is gonna work out perfectly, and I think the council did a good job his last couple nights they were here, and looking forward to that, to the night when we have further discussions. Thank you.
Thank you. This was a report, so there's no need for any action. We also have a ninety-nine B, which is an airport liaison report. Alderwoman Deb Hadcock.
Just wanted to say, I've had the opportunity to go to a couple airport meetings, and I am the liaison for them. And there was good news today. The FAA end-of-the-year monies came through, and they just got awarded a five-point-five million dollar federal funding for the ARF station, which is the airport rescue and firefighting facility. So that's pretty exciting, and I thought the council, that was something that we needed to know about. So congratulations to the airport board and Mr. Cameron Humphries. So I thought that was just something positive to say.
Very good. Thank you. Let's see, that does take us on to staff items, items one hundred, and this is an update on the twenty-twelve. Mr. Ellis, did you have an update?
Very brief, I do. Two projects to report on. Project number fourteen, which is located on page three, residential streets. We awarded the Maple in East Idaho project four-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand, six-hundred-and-eighteen. And then also on page six, project number thirty-three, the tennis courts at Parkview Pool. There were two payments made to the contractor, leaving a balance of four-hundred-and-seventy-seven thousand, nine-hundred-and-seventy-three dollars. Those are my only two updates.
Very good. Any questions to discussion? Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question's for Robert.
Go ahead, please.
Thank you. Robert, the twenty-twelve funding for the road Hawthorne through the school mines, has there been any progress on that?
Mr. Ellis?
We have had some discussions with the school of mines. They were allocated a million dollars. I think the price tag on that project is somewhere maybe closer to three million dollars. They are searching for additional funds to do their participating cost on that. I haven't heard if they've been successful.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? If not, chair, look for a motion to acknowledge. We have a motion second to acknowledge reporting. Discussion on that motion. Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. That does take us to the public hearing items. These are items one-oh-one through one-twenty-six inclusive. The chair will look for a motion to open the public hearing on items one-oh-one through one-twenty-six inclusive. We have a motion and a second. Discussion on that motion. Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. We have a number of speaker request forms, and so we'll just go through these based on the items on the agenda. We have a speaker request form on item one-oh-nine from Matt Benny. Matt, if you would, please. There again, please keep in mind, we do time this. You're allowed three minutes if you'd watch the lights, and the first thing I would ask you, if you'd just identify yourself for the record.
My name is Matt Benny. I represent B-Dubs LLC, I'm the purchaser of the liquor license for one-oh-nine, and I want to thank you for your consideration, and would appreciate approval on the item, and I just want to say I'm here if you guys have any questions when you come to the item. Thanks.
Very good. Thank you. We also have a speaker request form from Dean Hendrickson on item one-ten. There again, Dean, if you would identify yourself for the record.
Dean Hendrickson. I'm the owner of Dino's Casino on East North Street. I've been in business twelve and a half years. MG Oil has helped me a hundred percent in finding and running a successful business. I wouldn't be where I am today without the help of MG Oil. And I feel in my heart that MG Oil should have the opportunity and the okay to transfer the existing lottery license at the Haynes Avenue location, which qualifies for all the requirements in Rapid City. I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you people, and I hope that you will vote yes on this new location transfer. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We also have a speaker request form from Bill, is it Flohr?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Item one-ten. Wasn't quite sure how to pronounce it, but...
You did good.
Thank you.
Mayor, councilmembers, department staff. I'm Bill Flohr, I'm the investigator for MG Oil Company. Starting the first year, I will be in that position for going on twenty years. Prior to that, I had an eighteen-year career in law enforcement. When I left the Pennington County Sheriff's Office, I was a senior sergeant. I've looked at these calls for service. The initial run that was requested was for thirteen months, which reflected seventy-three calls for service, which is an average of six calls for service a month. Just speaking with the chief, he said they filtered it, and it's actually fifty-one calls for service in a twelve-month period of time. Approximately forty percent of those calls for service would be officer-initiated. So you get down to where you have three calls for service a month, is what we're talking about. Now MG Oil Company has cooperated with law enforcement in Rapid City, Pennington County, Meade County, and Box Elder on numerous occasions, helping them, assisting them in solving crimes, including armed robberies, turning over video monitors or cameras that led to the solving of bank robberies, identifying suspects, camera video that was taken at the truck stop that located a major Midwest larceny ring. And we're good neighbors. We're not perfect, but we're good neighbors. And so, when you sit down and look at the fact that in that particular casino, and by the way, any six-month police officer could tell you that there are a number of locations in Rapid City, that even though they say casino, and they have machines, they're more a neighborhood bar. Haynes Avenue's more of a neighborhood bar. So when you look at the fact that you've had nine disturbance calls, nine bar checks, four assaults, two fights, and various other incendiary calls in a year, that's not too bad. We have a staff that's approximately six people in security. Some of these calls for service are calls for service that are initiated by our security staff, because we don't tolerate people up there that aren't going to behave. We also cooperate with, you know, people that are trying to serve warrants, parole officers, you know. I think we're good operators. I'm proud to be where I'm being located. Thank you.
Thank you. We also have a speaker request form from a Dan Nagel, on item one-ten. There again, Mr. Nagel, if you'd just identify yourself for the record, then you have the floor, sir.
My name is Dan Nagel, and I thank you for the opportunity to talk to you tonight. I'd like to talk about the neighborhood just a little. I remember when there used to be gunfights in the trailer park located across from where Troy wants to put his casino. There were bullet holes in the frame along the entrance door in the mini-mart. Now that's what's now known as the Loaf and Jug. The bar was a liquor store, and the whole area was pretty mean. Then it began to change. Now it's going into a nice neighborhood, I believe, and the trailer park is a much better place, thanks to the efforts of the owner and residents of the trailer park. There are not gunfights in Haynes Avenue anymore. Their business starting to come into the area. Few of them have been there for a while. I remember the lot with the strip, the new strip mall that Mr. Erickson wants to put his casino into, that lot sat empty for over twenty-five years, I believe. And now it's being developed into a nice building. The casino Mr. Erickson is proposing will add to the area, not detract from it. In my eleven years of watching over Haynes Avenue Casino, I have never ever seen anyone there carrying a can of spray paint to put graffiti on the building as some people would like you to believe. Yes, there is graffiti in the area, but it's put there from young teenagers, wannabes that are living in the area, not the patrons of the bar. The drugs that they have stated that are stumbling through the neighborhood are doing just that, coming from elsewhere and going to another area, and Haynes Avenue is the most convenient way to get there. I believe Mr. Erickson is going to build a nice casino. He's asking people to come see some of his other operations. And yes, you can get a beer there. You can also get a cup of coffee or a soft drink. And he runs the classic casinos. I know I'm in every one of them every night. And as a former property owner who used to set a hundred and twenty feet from the the trailer park, and about five hundred feet from where the casino sits now that he owns, I remember all the gunfights and all the things that happened in that area. And I want the members of the North Rapid Civic Association to know, back in nineteen-seventy-nine, I helped start the first neighborhood watching that area. So I have been watching over it.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. We also have a speaker request form from Joan Kittlewell. I believe that's how you pronounce it. Joan, if you could come forward, and if you could identify yourself for the record, please.
Thank you. My name is Joan Kittlewell, and I own a business on Haynes Avenue. We are exit fifty-eight, and I don't know what that means to the rest of you, but it's your gateway into downtown Rapid Business District. The Civic Center and the Journey Museum, that is your first impression of Rapid City for many. Already a couple of entrances that don't give a good first impression in Rapid. We already have three liquor licensed establishments in that area within approximately two blocks. Now this proposed casino will be the fourth. Is this the vision of Rapid City? I think there's responsibility here, from our council and for you, Mr. Hanks. When gambling was legalized in this state, and I was one of the voters, it said it would take the pressure off of property taxes and would help finance our school systems. Do you remember this? Now with property taxes continuing to rise and salaries for teachers in South Dakota are still among the lowest in the nation, I think you need to answer that. And I'm looking for vision with this. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. We also have a speaker request form from Wayne Jackson, item one-fifteen.
Good evening. I'm Wayne Jackson. I am one of six MG Oil security officers who are on the streets seven days a week, patrolling our properties throughout all four corners of the city. Our job is to ensure the safety of our many employees and our customers. We are on duty from seven-thirty PM to four o'clock AM. There are three or four of us working each shift, MG Oil and the Erickson family. MG Oil and the Erickson family are in fact one of the best neighbors you could have in the area. They spend each year tens of thousands of dollars on security equipment and wages. No other casino operators in the city do this. While on patrol in our unmarked vehicles, we see numerous illegal activities going on that we report to the police, and we work closely with them on many matters. No matter how the vote turns out, I can assure you and anyone else in the area that MG Oil continue to look out for the citizens of the community. That is the type of people the Erickson family are. I would also add that Mr. Dan Nagel and myself are both former longtime South Dakota police officers. I invited council members and any citizen to meet with me to discuss issues. However, there was no response. We issue written trespass warnings, make our own arrests, and the police transport for us. We have a picture book of over 600 unwanted people. After giving testimony at the hearing last Wednesday, I went to work that night, and at 1:30 AM, my partner and I encountered a violent drunk who came on our property at 901 East North Street, our convenience store. Upon effecting his arrest, I received nine stitches below my right eye. This is the third violent confrontation in less than 30 days at our stores on East North Street. We earn our pay. Also, none of your police officers were injured because we already had them in custody, and because we called them to transport, we now have another call for service at our store, which at some time might be used against MG Oil. Does that sound right to you? It has been stated there were 70-some calls at Haynes Avenue Casino in a one-year period. When some highly intoxicated person comes to our door in the middle of winter, and we either call police to get them because we arrest them again for trespassing for the fifth time in that year, or they need to go to detox, and we call the police department, it gets used against us. Just used against MG Oil. Would you rather we send them stumbling away to lay down in a field and die? Sorry, I nor MG Oil can't operate that way. But that is somewhat what the council is trying to force us to do, to lower the call for service count. Let's all work together to build a better community and stronger community and not be fast and loose with figures and trying to spread false rumors and fear. I thank you for our time, and we do the best we can. We earn our pay, and we try to keep every citizen of Rapid City safe, and we're just doing the best we can. Thank you much.
Thank you, sir. We also have a speaker request form from Heather Tarango. Hope I got that right. There again, Heather, if you would identify yourself for the record, and then the floor's yours, ma'am.
My name's Heather Tarango, and I live in the mobile home park that has been such big concern. That mobile home park, I moved in there two and a half years ago and has done a complete 180. I'm actually proud of my neighborhood now and will continue to be proud. We have worked very diligently to clean up the drunks passing through. Like the security officer said, what better neighbors to have than security officers who are constantly driving by and who have actually stopped to help us to remove drunks out of our trailer park? It's not their job, but they still do it. Whether or not they get their liquor license, we're still going to be diligent on keeping the drunks out of this park. It's not the drunks in the park, it's the drunks coming from the surrounding areas. We have low-income housing behind us, we have low-income housing in front of us. We have a liquor store, we have a bar. You know, it's not that it's just a gambling facility, it's a full-fledged bar. And I can name almost all of my neighbors, and I know two who go into that bar. And then it's for one or two drinks and home. Like I said, I'm in support of this because what better neighbors to have than security guards that we know are going to be there and that are going to stop and help if we need the help to get them out? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. We also have a speaker request form from Troy Erickson on item 115. I assume this is both 110 and 115. Mr. Erickson, if you could identify yourself for the record.
Thank you. My name is Troy Erickson. I'm the applicant of the on-sale alcohol establishment on the corner of Lindbergh and Haynes. I think I've talked to most of the people on the council, talked to a lot of the neighbors in the neighborhood, some of our employees, some of the people that live in the trailer court, invited people on the council to look at my other casinos. We've kind of been compared to the one bar we have on Haynes Avenue. I don't know if anyone's visited the other casinos. Like I've said before, if we didn't have to have a beer license and we could put the lottery in, I would. Going to be brief, I guess. I went through all the proper channels. The site meets all the qualifications on four sides, its own general commercial. It's an existing license, transferring into a new location, coming off of Campbell Street onto Haynes Avenue. There's one other video lottery place on Haynes. If you go to other areas of town, they're stacked up for blocks. I believe this is a good site for a video lottery place. And like I've said, it meets all the qualifications, it's been to every committee, and I'm just looking forward to the vote tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. We also have a speaker request form from Alice McCoy on item 110. There again, Alice, if you would identify yourself for the record, and then you have the floor, ma'am.
I'm Alice McCoy. I'm vice president of North Rapid Civic Association, and as the members that we polled, they would prefer that we not have another casino bar of any sort. We're not against Ericksons in particular or anybody, but we're against that type of business. We've really worked hard to try to clean up that area. We love having our new strip malls, but we'd like to have family-oriented businesses in there. And then, again, the one lady made the comment, we're some of the first things that people see when they come to town, and we don't need to see that. And the fact that they admit themselves that they have to have security guards, I don't know any place else that has to have security guards. I mean, that kind of says what kind of clientele they have. And we police our own neighborhood. We are also Mahoney Edition Neighborhood Watch, and we police our own. And we, I have, I'm talking for some of the women that, the single women, elderly ladies that won't come for fear of different things because of the panhandling, and they say that they'll panhandle from them, and they'll walk right over there to that place, to the casino. So they were afraid to do that, and we also wrote letters to you, so you can, just a reminder that you did. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Let's see, I also have a note on item 114. Amy Kelly said she doesn't necessarily need to speak, but just wants to make sure you're aware that she's available for questions as that item comes up. I also have a speaker request form from Jerry Olson, items 116, 119, 120, 122. Mr. Olson. There again, if you'd identify yourself for the record.
Jerry Olson. Good evening, mayor and council members. As you've seen, proposals drawn by C-Tech Engineering for expanding our business so that we can keep on manufacturing concrete products. We have been in business 37 years and hope that our sons and employees can manufacture products for the next 37-plus years and serve the community with the product they need. With this expansion, we can serve the community better and also have the workplace more efficient for the employees, and with the expansion, we can have it look more acceptable to the community. Please approve this item 16, 19, 20, and 22. Adds for heavy industrial zoning. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Olson. We also have a speaker request form from Ted Schultz on item 116, 119, 120, 122. Ted, there again, if you'd identify yourself for the record.
Thank you, mayor. I'm Ted Schultz with C-Tech Engineering Services. I'm representing Mr. Olson and J.D. Precast property, and these items are zoning and comprehensive plan amendments for his property. He was in the county zoning in the past and has recently been annexed into the city. He's currently not zoned and is a no-use zoning. He is asking for a heavy industrial zoning designation and is willing to include a planned industrial development into that item. He does manufacture concrete tile for roof, also manholes and other concrete products for areas all over Rapid City for construction projects. He is currently operating there as a heavy industrial business, and he would not be able to get a building permit to modify or enhance or expand or do anything in any other zoning ordinance. So we are asking that he would be allowed to stay in heavy industrial and with a planned industrial development. And if you have any questions, I'll be available.
Thank you. We also have a speaker request form from Royal Nielsen. There again, Mr. Nielsen, if you would identify yourself for the record, and then you have the floor, sir.
I'm Royal Nielsen, Nielsen Construction. I thank you, Honorable Mayor and council. I had the pleasure of working with some of the council people, looking at my problem, and things I'd like to get done to continue my business and help out J.D. Precast, get their location going. And the things will be cleaned up. Once I find out which way I'm going and what I'm doing, you bet they will be. I thank you.
Thank you, sir. We also have a speaker request form from Gary Beckwith on items 118 and 123. There again, sir, if you'd identify yourself for the record, and then you have the floor.
Yes, sir. I'm Gary Beckwith. I reside at 911 Glenside Street. I'm primarily interested in the northmost portion of this property. When it was in the county, it was a low-density residential, and it's proposed to be switched over to light industrial. My property lies about 100 feet or so, maybe a little more, from this property. And where every three sides of this property is housing. You know, if we switch this over to light industrial, it is definitely not very conducive to a residential neighborhood. So consequently, I would request that this be kept to low-density residential. Would definitely not be conducive to our housing areas, so thank you.
Thank you, sir. We also have a speaker request form from Mike Schwartzman, item 116, and it looks like 123. There again, sir, if you would identify yourself for the record, then you'll have the floor.
My name's Mike Schwartzman, and I live at 1022 Rock Hill Road and have been there for the last 13 and a half years. We would like you to vote the way the growth management proposes to zone Mr. Nielsen and Mr. Olson's properties. By voting as a growth management proposes, it would allow them to continue to do business as they are presently engaged and would help to ensure the future use of this land when they decide to sell. I would like to add that Mr. Nielsen has his property listed for sale at this time now. If this land is zoned light and heavy industrial, it would allow just about any kind of business to come in to a predominantly low-density residential neighborhood. According to the Director of Equalization, most of the homes in this neighborhood were there before Mr. Olson and Mr. Nielsen started their businesses 36, 37 years ago. They started their businesses in a residential neighborhood. The residential neighborhood did not grow around their businesses. If this land is zoned light and heavy industrial, it would greatly reduce our quality of life and our property values. So please vote for growth management's recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you. I do not have any additional speaker request forms on items 101 through 126 inclusive. Anyone else wish to speak that has not had the opportunity to speak yet tonight? Anyone else? If not, we will move on, and just for everyone's information, at this part of the agenda, we do leave the public comment period open. And so what we're looking at is we're going to go to the continued public hearing consent items. This is items 101 through 104 inclusive, and the chair would ask if any of the items 104, I'm sorry, 101 through 104 inclusive need to be pulled from the consent calendar. Marcia? You're good? How about from the city council? Any items 101 through 104 from the consent calendar? If not, the chair would look for a motion to approve the consent calendar, item 101 through 104 inclusive, per the recommendations as published. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. That does take us to the end of the continued public hearing consent items, and at this time, the chair would ask for a motion to close the public hearing consent on items 101 through 126 inclusive. We have a motion and a second to close public comment period. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. That does take us to the consent public hearing items. This is items 105 through 113. Just a reminder, we have dealt with items 105 and 106. And let's see here, the chair will ask if any other items 107 through 113 need to be removed from the consent calendar. If so, please turn on your light. Mr. Preston.
Thank you, mayor. I'd like to have items 111 and 112 pulled, please.
Okay. 111 and 112. Any additional items pulled from the consent calendar? The consent calendar is 107 through 113. Let's go to Jason Green, city attorney.
Mayor, just for clarification, I believe item 110 was moved down on your agenda.
It has.
Not a part of your consent calendar.
Yeah, 110 has actually been moved to immediately follow item 115. That was part of the adoption of the agenda, so thank you for that reminder. So for everyone in the audience, we'll be moving on the consent calendar that will not include item 110. 110 will be heard immediately after 115, which will be dealt with separately. Any other items? So far, the consent calendar, items 107 through 113 with the exception of 111 and 112. Any others to be pulled? Now, the chair would look for a motion to approve the consent public hearing items, items 107 through 113 inclusive with the exception of 111 and 112. Thank you. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. We are on to item 111. And Alderwoman Olson, could you please read in item number 111, please? Here in fact, I think you can do 111 and 112 together. I think the motion on both of those is continue to October 5th.
Items 111 and 112. Lamore Restaurant Group Incorporated DBA is Denny's 2206 North Lacrosse Street. Request for retail on-sale malt beverage license, no video lottery. And the request from Lamore Restaurant Group Incorporated DBA is doing business as Denny's to 2206 North Lacrosse Street for retail on-sale wine license. And I would, my motion would be to continue both items to the October 5th city council meeting.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to continue items 111 and 112 to the city council meeting on October 5th. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. 113, please. If you could read that in for us, Karen.
113 is a resolution. Is a resolution levying assessment for cleanup of miscellaneous properties. Move approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. That does take us to the end of this consent public hearing calendar. We're on to the non-consent public hearing items. This is item 114 through 126, and we will go to item 114, please.
Approve with the stipulation that the gate open inward, a request by Amy Kelly to consider an application for a fence height exception to allow a six-foot-high fence in the front yard setback on property generally described as located at 624 Adams Street. My motion would be for approval with stipulation.
Second. We have a motion and a second for approval of stipulations. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes with one no from Alderman Bill Watt. Thank you, everyone. Item 115, please.
An appeal of the Planning Commission's decision on a request by Troy Erickson for MG Oil Company for a conditional use permit to allow an on-sale liquor establishment on property generally described as the southwest corner of the intersection of Lindbergh Avenue and Haynes Avenue. And I would, my motion would be for denial.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for denial. Discussion on that motion. Let's go to... Sure. I'm going to go to Jason Green, who has his lights light on. Jason, go ahead.
I had two things, mayor. One was to clarify whether the motion is to deny the appeal or to deny the conditional use permit.
It would be to deny the conditional use permit.
And then the second item would be... And then the second item would be that the ordinance is very specific on the criteria the council should consider when denying a conditional use permit for an on-sale alcohol establishment. Those criteria, I believe, are set out in the staff report. They exist at 17.50.185 of the municipal code. I believe that subsection C of those criteria is the most relevant for your consideration. That criteria says that the proposed use will not create an undue concentration of similar uses so as to cause blight, deterioration, or substantially diminish or impair the property values. So I would ask that the motion maker clarify whether the intent is to include that finding within the motion.
That would be my intent.
Thank you.
Okay, and is that all right with the seconder? Who's, okay, very good. The motion on the floor is to deny, let's see, to deny the appeal of the Planning Commission's decision stating, as per outlined by Mr. Green, that the proposed use will, would create an undue concentration of similar uses. Okay, everyone, clear in the motion. Discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not clear on the motion, but subsection C, I mean, is that like, who, what kind of determination is that? I mean...
Let's go to Jason Green for the explanation. I think what he's gonna tell you is it's laid out within state statute that there's certain criteria for denying, and this is one of them, but I'm gonna turn to Jason Green.
It's actually city ordinance. It's a criteria that the council has adopted. And what your ordinance says today is that an on-sale liquor establishment must be issued if these following criteria are met. As the mayor indicated, the motion on the floor would be that the council finds that the proposed use would create an undue concentration of similar uses so as to cause blight, deterioration, or substantially diminish or impair property values.
My question to that, I drove up from Valley Drive, South Valley Drive, to Elm Street, and I counted no less than seven casinos. And that wasn't counting the ones that were doubled up, two right next to each other. And I'm not advocating for or against, I'm just confused how this is appropriate, and I'm hoping that Jason can understand, give me a reasoning for that. And that didn't include, I think there was four bars with casino, and seven, minimum of seven if you, like, two or three of them were doubles. So I think there was, I would imagine there were about nine to 12 of them in that stretch from South Valley Drive to Elm Street.
Let's go to Jason Green.
Thank you, Mayor. The ultimate determination on this is the council's.
Okay.
But in my, based on what I've seen in the criteria, I think that is the strongest basis that the council has for denying the issuance of this conditional use permit. Now, the other one you could look at is whether or not it's sufficiently buffered with regard to residential areas, but I don't think that one's really what you have heard in your testimony. What you've heard is people telling you that they believe there are too many casinos in this area. Ultimately, whether or not you believe there are is a decision for the council to make. And simply because there are more in another location doesn't necessarily mean that four in this particular location is not an undue concentration, but that's your decision to make.
Well, I appreciate that. I'm just trying to understand what would give someone a basis to deny this in a general commercial area that's already zoned general commercial. I, I'm not advocating for it or against it. I mean, if the neighbors don't like it, I understand. I haven't heard a lot of animosity against it. I've had people question me on why we would give another license. We haven't given another license. I think this is a transfer, if I recall. I don't, I think there's a moratorium on a license, and I want to make that very clear. There's a moratorium, in my understanding, and I'll pose that question to Jason Green. Is there a moratorium on licenses?
Let's go to Jason Green, City Attorney.
There's a moratorium on the issuance of new video lottery licenses. What you're being asked to ultimately approve in the second item would be the transfer of an existing video lottery license. So this is not the issuance of a new one that would violate the moratorium.
I would imagine that, I at least know of two times that this went to a vote to the public, and the public, for some reason, whatever it may be, voted to continue to have video license operating, video gaming operating in the city of Rapid City. I struggle with this. I understand some of the concerns on both sides. I just, I'm finding myself somewhat of a quagmire, trying to say that this is an undue concentration. When I drive up and down a street that has a minimum of 14 of them. And one of them, I know, was just approved less than eight months ago. The double stack, the casino is one right next to another. There's a, there's a St. Packard Street Casino, and then right next to it is another casino with two licenses. So in that area, I believe there's like, I don't know, 30 machines, 40 machines plus. Also, I just wanted to get some information from the chief. At Legal and Finance, we moved this forward. And because one of the things that continually came up, and I wanna, I wanna, I wanna appeal to Mr. Erickson and his security guard to not quit doing what you're doing. Don't not call the police because you have a call for service. I understand your concerns there, and I hope that we, I don't think that the council's directly using that against you. I can understand why, how that could get construed into that idea. I've visited your casino. The one in question on Haynes, I'd have to say, if it's a bar, pool hall, casino, whatever it is, it's clean, it's nice. I mean, I'm not there all the time. I understand things can happen. I had, I think, someone in the apartment complex by my house not very far from it got shot on Saturday night. But I guess I would ask the chief for the information that we requested on how this, how casinos relate and calls, and I don't wanna have an undue burden for a neighborhood. I understand the neighborhood concerns, but I also understand this is a general commercial area. They've really done a lot of work over there, both the neighborhood has and the business population has also, to keep this place clean. It looks nice over there. I've been living in Rapid City since 1970, and to see the results, they're amazing over there. I wish I could get a lot of those people to come over to South Rapid and help us get some of the yellow buildings torn down and get some nice commercial buildings put over there.
Okay, thank you. Chief, do you understand what he's looking for?
I believe I do.
Okay, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mayor. What I've handed out to the council is a report that has a number of casinos listed on it and their total calls for service, their police calls for service. I believe there's about 130 casino licenses in Rapid City, if my count's correct. And we weeded out the ones that are inside of another building, like a hotel lobby or a bar and those kind of things, because, just simply for the ease of calculating calls for service. So I've identified 47 casinos on this report that are in buildings dedicated to the casino business, such as Mr. Erickson's. So you see the casino names and the calls for service for a 12-month period ending July 31st of this year. Haynes Avenue Casino is number four on the list, four out of 47, with 51 calls per year. And these calls are a wide range of police calls. They're not all fights or disturbances, or they're not all officer-initiated calls. But there's a definite break between number four and number five, and then they, they continue to go down on this chart. Just in the top 47 casinos, they go down to one call for service in a year. So for comparison's sake, there's a lot of things that have to be taken into consideration, the size of the building and the traffic flow and all of these sorts of things. But overall, the more I think about it, I just think this report is generally statistically neutral. I mean, it doesn't really prove one thing or the other. What you see is what you get.
Thank you. Alderman Wyffenbach, show of the floor if you'd like it, sir.
Thank you, Chief, for giving this. And one of the casinos I talked about is on here, obviously, and they stacked two more casinos right next to it. Three of the top, one, two, three, four, five, six are on that street. I'm not sure if it, what it does, but it gives a correlation if people wanna make a judgment call on, you know, if the casinos are a problem in that area or not, so. I appreciate your hard work on this, Chief, and, thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach. I'm sorry, Ron Kroger. I had too many Rons here. There again, they look alike, so.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna make it short tonight. I've been on the council for 13 years, and during that 13-year period of time, I have, I have approved a lot of on-sale liquor licenses and I have denied some. And I can truthfully tell you, on all of them that we've denied in the past and even approved, I have never, ever heard the discussion that I heard tonight, and a lot of it come from Mr. Erickson's employees. I mean, I heard gunfights, bullet holes in buildings, fights, fistfights, calls for service, drunks. You name it, and we had it. And I guess the big thing to really stress to this council is, is, you know, I talked about calls for service last Legal and Finance meeting, and I talked about the three, over 300 calls for service in the trailer park next door to this. And this area has taken great strides to move forward. I mean, the whole neighborhood is changing. We got a lot of new commercial buildings going on in the area. The trailer park, as you've heard, is being, is being cleaned up. All of those are good, positive things. But I can tell you, the last thing that this neighborhood needs is another on-sale liquor establishment. I mean, when you talk about gunfights, bullet holes in buildings, and you talk alcohol, I mean, my mind clicks, and that's the kind of things that happen when you have alcohol. So I would hope this council does as other councils in the past have done, and not approve this license, because it certainly is to blight and diminishes the property values in that area, and I would hope that you agree with the motion on the floor. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderwoman Karen Olson.
Thank you very much. In the discussion at Legal and Finance, when this item was discussed, there were a number of people who spoke who are not here tonight. And I, their words were, had a great deal of impact on me. Several were business owners, and they were concerned with the way that this business would impact their new businesses that they felt were meeting the more progressive view of this particular neighborhood. And while those folks are not here tonight, I want my colleagues who missed that discussion to know that they were urging us to look carefully at this, because they feel this neighborhood is on the upward trend, and they didn't feel that this was going to contribute to it in any way. I also remind my colleagues that when you talk about a conditional use permit, what they're essentially saying is, all the other criteria may be met, but we are given the right, we are, as a council, as elected officials, given the responsibility to take a special look at the condition that exists in this neighborhood. And no one is a stronger supporter of neighborhoods than I am. And it is very important that people feel proud of their neighborhood, that they recognize that they are on an upward path, and they speak of it well. There were some comments about the Mobile Home Park. There is, this is also a part of the neighborhood as well. And they are entitled to be safe and secure in their, in their neighborhood. And it seems to me that this change, the allowance of this conditional use, doesn't impact this neighborhood in a positive way at all. And one of the strengths of the neighborhood is the neighborhood themselves, people who speak up, who are interested, who come forward and who organize and bring their neighbors together in a positive way. And I see that as happening in this neighborhood. And the very fact that people are speaking out says to me, this is not the conditional use that should be, impact this neighborhood. So I, I am in support of the motion on the floor for denial of the conditional use.
Okay, thank you.
I have one more comment, Mr. Mayor. In regard to the fact that there are concentrations of liquor establishments in other neighborhoods, if that's the case, I don't think we use that as a reason to do something in someplace else. That's the whole point of conditional use. Conditional use allows us to make a judgment call based on how we see it impacting a specific neighborhood. I know downtown, there was some real concern, and I voiced this concern with liquor establishments, particularly that those, when a full-service kitchen is a part of the proposal. So I don't think we make any decisions based on someplace else. We take a look and we honor the citizens who live within the community, and we honor their opinions. And I'm being told by the citizens whose opinions I value highly, that this doesn't impact their community in a positive way.
Thank you. Further discussion. Motion on the floor, just so everyone is clear in the motion on the floor. The motion on the floor is to deny the appeal of the Planning Commission's decision on a request by Troy Erickson for MG Oil for a conditional use permit to allow an on-sale liquor establishment, and to also include the language as per recommended by our city attorney. The rationale is that the proposed use would create an undue concentration of similar uses as to cause blight, deterioration, or substantial diminishment or impairment of property values. Okay, everyone, clear in the motion on the floor. All those in favor of the motion of denial signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes with one no from Alderman Wyffenbach. Okay, and I do want to make sure the record reflects Alderman, but Troy did have stated he did have a conflict. Okay, thank you, everyone. See, that takes us to item 110. Marsh, where'd Marsh go? Would your recommendation on 110 be to table or?
I believe there's some implications for the applicant on the license. They may wish to withdraw that and have you acknowledge that.
Okay, I asked Jason about that. Go ahead, Jason Green.
There's a provision in the state statute that says if a license is denied, you can't have another license from the same person. I believe that applies to new licenses. This is a transfer. But the applicant should probably get their own legal advice on this, rather than taking my gut reaction.
Okay, Marcia, we're looking for a recommendation. Karen, can you go and read it in, please? Item 110.
Item 110, MG Oil Company, Doing Businesses Chances Casino, 1565 Haynes Avenue, for retail on, off-sale malt beverage license with video lottery, transfer from MG Oil Company, Doing Businesses Clock Tower Lounge, 2525 West Main. And...
Marcia, recommendation?
The applicant would like to continue this for two weeks so they can confer with legal counsel.
My motion would be to continue this item for two weeks.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to continue this item for two weeks. Any discussion on that motion? We're dealing with item 110. Continuation, two weeks. Seeing no further lights, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Item 116, please.
Item 116, sorry. Item 116, a request by the City of Rapid City for an amendment to the adoptive comprehensive plan to change the land use designation from general commercial to heavy industrial with a planned industrial development on property located west of Salliview Valley Drive and north of South Dakota Highway 44. My motion is to deny.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for denial. Any discussion on that motion? Let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hatcock.
I'd like to make a substitute to approve. This does have a heavy industrial with a planned industrial development. If you look on the map, there isn't a future land use map up there, but across the street from these properties is all heavy industrial and light industrial. And I'd tell this council, if future land use or growth management in this area has, has put denial, then this council, about a month ago, just put heavy industrial across the street about a couple blocks. So I would like to, I don't know if you can see that, but where, where Mr. Jerry Olson's property is located up there, if you go directly across the street is light industrial from him. The next one's light industrial, the next one's heavy industrial, the next one's light industrial, and the one behind it, that homeless, that whole area is light industrial. So I'm trying to figure out in the comprehensive plan or the future land use plan, why would you deny a guy a heavy industrial with the planned industrial development right across the street if we don't want industrial in this area? It's on a frontage. It's a guy that has had this business for 37 years. He wants to add the next piece to heavy industrial. It's on a frontage. It's doing the same thing that, the same thing that people do across, are doing across the street. And yet, there is residential, residences and stuff around there. And I did drive around on Jerry Olson's place. He does have his stuff nicely done. It will be redone with a planned industrial development. If I'm correct, and maybe I need to ask Marcia on this, we can come back, because on planned, PCDs, PIDs, we can come back, and this can go on a review if this use changes, if I'm correct. correct.
Let's go to Marcia. Do you understand the question, Marcia?
Yes. When the applicant would submit an actual initial and final development plan that showed development for the property, that point in time, there would be stipulations, and it would be typical to have one that said if there was a change in use, that it would need a major amendment, which would go back through the Planning Commission, and ultimately could be appealed to the council.
Right. So changing the use on this is like when we did the parking lot on the guy that was on Fifth Street. If it changes the use, and we did annex this area in, my issue with this is, we annex areas in, and then we decide that after thirty-seven years, that this guy, if he wants to expand his business, we're not going to let him expand it. We tell him that in future land use for our city, we decide to put general commercial, we don't think that should be on there. We should change the use on it. But right across the street, we have a whole area that's doing the same thing he is. Now, let's ask ourselves, we just changed a piece of it to heavy industrial, and Mr. Kroger does have that piece up here, I don't know if we can put it up front, we just changed about a month ago into heavy industrial piece right down the street. If that's not what we want for this area, then why did we change a person that just changed their use into heavy industrial, and tell them a man at this point that already has it, that that's not something that we should do there? I guess my point in my motion is to approve this, because this is something that he can approve on this area, he can change it to make it look nice, he has to put it by the stipulations of a PID. He has to clean up this area, he has to make it look good, and it has to look good around the neighbor's area, and if I'm correct, you can put stipulations of fences and things like that to make it so it's protected for the neighbors. He's making concrete products, he is stacking those concrete products, and I don't see that that is an issue. If that's, if it's not cleaned up enough, or it's not this and that, this council can change that with this use from the city. So, long story short, sorry. My motion is to approve this based on all those particular issues.
Okay, we have a substitute motion and a second, and that motion is to approve the amendment to the adoptive comprehensive plan to change the land use designation from general commercial to heavy industrial with a planned industrial development, and of course, this is all located west of Valley Drive and north of South Dakota Highway 44. Everyone clear on the substitute motion? Discussion on the substitute motion, let's go to Alderwoman Karen Olson.
I will not be in support of the substitute motion, because I believe that the key thing on the map is the fact of where the low-density residential neighborhood is. My colleague pointed out an absolute fact, which is, there is heavy industrial across the street, but there isn't a concentration of residential homes that have been there for a period of time. That's really what we're talking about. We are talking about a neighborhood, a group of people who have been at this site prior, these homes have been here, and they precede Mr. Olson's business. This isn't an easy decision, and we won't be putting Mr. Olson out of business. He will continue to continue his business as JD Precast, but essentially, what we're saying is, we need to have, to honor this residential neighborhood. And in terms of the possibility, therefore, of, if this becomes either heavy or light industrial adjacent, all kinds of, intruding kinds of activities could take place here in the future, which would impact this low-density residential neighborhood adversely. And so, I can't support the motion on the floor. I think we need to allow Mr. Olson to continue his business at its current site, it is grandfathered in. I understand this area has been annexed, and we have, therefore, a special interest in making sure we treat, we make wise decisions as we look at this, this part of town that is new to the municipal boundaries of the City of Rapid City. And I think, in my mind, I do so, and I support the fact that Mr. Olson can continue his business at its current site, but we are saying to the neighbors, we're protecting your value of your homes and your safety and peace by continuing, by not allowing this to become heavy industrial or light industrial, which includes a lot of kinds of activity that wouldn't be desirable for low-density residential.
Thank you, Ms. Karen. Next, we'll recognize Alderman Ron Kroger.
Thank you. This is, this is really a tough one. As everybody's heard, Mr. Olson's been there for thirty-plus years, and what really makes it tough to me is, number one, is, of course, this was just annexed in here recently, and of course, Mr. Olson's business is grandfathered in. And I have to disagree with all the person Olson, that we're not putting him out of business. Really, we are. He's grandfathered in, but we basically put a heart monitor on Mr. Olson, and we're going to sit there and watch him die, because I don't know any business that can move forward that, number one, can't grow, can't expand, can't do nothing, just exist as he does today. There is not one business that I know of that will ever survive in that kind of an atmosphere. It can't happen. So I'm interested in seeing what we can do for Mr. Olson to keep him in business, and I'm interested in what Marcia can, what Marcia just said a little bit ago about how we, what we can do to allow Mr. Olson to do some expansion, but still watch over the neighborhood, and if there's a change of use in that facility, we get another say at it. But we are basically killing Mr. Olson and his business by grandfathering him in and not allowing him to do anything. And he's got a big business there, and it is worthless. He can't sell it. He can't sell it to move and build another one. He's not going to be able to sell it. Who's going to buy it? No one. He's not going to get out of the land, what he's got in the, in the buildings and everything else. He's, he's at our mercy, and we basically pull the plug on him if we do not allow him to do something. So I'm in favor of allowing something to happen here, but I'm certainly, you know, I have concerns about the neighborhood, and I understand in the future, somewhere down the line, it's probably not a good place to have light industrial, but I'm also not here to put someone out of business either. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kroger. Next, I'll recognize Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I believe that Mr. Olson is falling between the cracks in his business, and that's one of the reasons that, when he originally came forward and rezoning the property to general commercial, whatever happens, grandfathering him in is a slow death automatically for Mr. Olson and for the neighborhood. I don't know exactly if the neighbors understand what a PID can do for a neighborhood. What the PID can do for your neighborhood is to allow Mr. Olson to continue his business, and allow him to clean it up. If they've noticed over there that some of those old buildings and all those types of things, the reason they exist is because under current zoning laws, they can't be rebuilt or built. There's storage sheds over there waiting to be built, they can't be built because of current zoning laws. If you put a PID in place, what that does is, when they make major amendments to this piece of property, they have to come back before the council and get them approved. And in that period of time, if we allow Mr. Olson to continue operating and grandfather him in, you'll have the same type of effect that North Rapid has on some of their houses that are grandfathered in as duplexes and those types of things, that the return on investment doesn't make any sense for the people to fix them up. And then, therefore, you have a deteriorated, dilapidated neighborhood, because the person that's running it can't cash flow it out to fix it up. And then what happens is it deteriorates to the level of total disgust, it becomes worthless and useless, and sits empty. So I'm hoping that this is the best balance that I think is available to protect the neighborhood. I know there's plans to also help some of the neighbors to the north with other opportunities that they, that exist there right now, via water sewer and those types of things through this period. But if it doesn't cash flow or make sense for Mr. Olson, those neighborhoods will stay the same. They're never going to, they're never going to become better neighborhoods. So to say that this would deteriorate the neighborhood, I think would be, in conclusion, probably incorrect. I think by putting this PID on this neighborhood, that allows the council to dictate what happens. And to be said that there'll be all kinds of uses that could happen there is, in my understanding, is not correct, and if somebody could correct me if I'm wrong, the only way that could happen is if they came back to the council, and they got approval to do something within that PID. That PID protects what's happening within that zoning area, and that was the reason that the heavy industrial came forward with the PID, is to protect Mr. Olson's business, and at the same time, protect the neighborhood. So with that being said, I think, yeah, I did second the motion, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wyffenbach. Next, I'll recognize Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Marcia, I have a question for you. A few years ago, I believe it was over on West Main, near Haley Park, the council was debating whether to allow rezoning, I believe, for a secondhand store or for a bookstore. And what we did is, we changed the zoning definitions to allow that type of use in the existing, in the existing zoning. You recall that? And where I'm going with that is, is that, is that a possibility here where, where what Mr. Olson does, could that be considered as an acceptable use in general commercial with planned commercial development?
I recognize Marcia Elkins.
I would strongly urge you not to consider amending the general commercial to allow this kind of industrial activity. There are just incompatibilities between that. We have multiple general commercial areas, just like the one you just considered, where, would not be appropriate to have this kind of manufacturing operation. I think it's inconsistent with that definition of the district.
And then, a follow-up question?
Sam Quaker.
Follow-up questions? In reading the public comments here, it appears that all of the public comments are against, are not necessarily against what Mr. Olson is trying to do, but they're specifically mentioning what Mr. Nielsen is trying to do, and they're specifically concerned about the code enforcement issues. Is that a fair statement, or am I overgeneralizing the neighborhood concern?
Marcia Elkins?
I did hear numerous comments, and again, from the calls that we've had, again, code enforcement weeds, the junk that is on the property, again, it's a salvage yard, so that's what one anticipated on Mr. Nielsen's property. But there were also concerns about just the development of the area and the industrial activities, noise, dust, and those kinds of activities, how it would affect the residential neighborhood to the north.
Thank you. Next, I'll recognize Alderwoman Karen Gunderson Olson.
Marcia, could you describe what potential things could happen, even with a planned industrial development? What kind of activities could take place?
Again, heavy industrial district is the most noxious district that we have, other than mining and extraction. It allows for there to be, again, concrete plant is one kind of thing, manufacturing, outdoor storage, storage of materials that are flammable, a whole variety of those, they're all listed in the zoning ordinance. Again, those are the most noxious, and again, intended to be where you would have your industrial manufacturing activities, so they would not impact the surrounding areas.
Mr. Olson, did you have a follow-up? No. Next, I'll recognize Alderwoman Deb Hattcock.
I guess my biggest point is, if he's grandfathered in, and he gets to do this for thirty-seven years more, and we leave it the same, we're not changing anything, and so, we've accomplished nothing on protecting the neighborhood and doing anything different. He'll be able to do the business he does for another thirty-seven years. Or we can change this to a heavy industrial with a planned development, or planned industrial development, clean it up, make it look better, let him continue his business, and then if it comes back with a PID, we do stipulations to make it better for the neighbors with fences and different things. So actually, we'd be doing the neighbors a service by cleaning up the area and helping Mr. Olson at the same time. I think it's a win-win situation. Again, he's grandfathered in, he can do this business and do it like he is now, do no cleanup on it for another thirty-seven years. He's grandfathered in, so it makes sense to do a PID and help the neighbors in order to do a cleanup, and help Mr. Olson on getting his business going and keeping him going.
Thank you, Ms. Hattcock. Further discussion, I'll recognize Vice President Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Marcia, just a clarification, I've heard a number of things, I just want to hear it clearly. If, if we approve this with the PID, then any change in business or use would require a coming forward of the applicant to the Planning Commission, or, did I hear that, or am I off-base?
What would trigger a initial and final development plan is if they wanted any building permits for the expansion of the use? So if they wanted to add on to a structure, or put a new structure on it for the use, then it would need to go through the initial and final development plan. If it was to expand on to another piece of property, as an example, that also could trigger the initial and final development plan, not necessarily the change in the business.
So if Mr. Olson decided to expand, that would come back before Planning Commission or somewhere in the system again?
Correct. They would need to submit an initial and final development plan, public hearing would go in front of the Planning Commission, Planning Commission's decision would be final unless appealed to the council.
You get a feel for where the council's headed here. Tell me where the council is flawed in this thinking, or why is this not the best of both worlds in terms of trying to find some protection for the neighborhood, but at the same time, trying to find some way to let a business not only survive, but potentially thrive?
I think it goes back to, again, this was zone general commercial in the county, had been for a significant period of time. The use had been grandfathered in by the county, they'd tried to expand in the county, and the county would not allow it because of the concerns from the neighborhood. It is an entryway into the community, and again, is this an appropriate location for that kind of activity in such close proximity to the residential neighborhood? And again, there is a presumption, even though through the planned industrial development process, you can control the uses, there is presumption in terms of the uses in that district being appropriate for it. So again, it becomes more difficult to turn down other industrial activities on the site.
Just a last question. What would happen if the property then sold?
Sale of property has no effect on the zoning or the planned development or the use of the property, as long as it's continued to be used for that purpose.
And you wouldn't rec, we couldn't put some stipulation on the sale of a property, or?
I don't believe that'd be defensible legally.
I see our city attorney nodding.
He's treating me well.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman. Marcia, I guess I'm a little confused. I've been looking at, looking at the plans that C-Tech has, that's all nicely colored and everything else, and I didn't bring that with me, I could see that. Because there was actually another one that they had, that had zonings that they were going to do. One of the plans that I had, that top, top part, was going to be LDR, and if I remember right, the plans that I seen earlier, that's where a lot of the old gas tank, or gas, big metal tank holders were, and that's where a lot of the complaints from the neighbors were getting. Am I right?
There were complaints about that, yes.
Okay. And so that, but right now, we're talking about...
We're just talking about this piece right here.
Just that piece right there. Okay. Because I do want to make the comment that I did meet with some neighbors out there, and, just as Marcia said, and some of the other council members had mentioned, that, you know, that back piece, they would recommend LDR, they didn't mind that. They did say good things about the Precast Company as far as being neat and so forth, and so, they didn't have much concern in that, but I didn't get not, did not get a chance to get out there this weekend to talk to them, to see if they're okay with these newer plans. That was my only, my only concern. But I guess, Amber, do you, do you know what the motion is on the floor? Just a substitute motion to approve, not with the PID, or with PID? Okay. And then, so the next ones coming up will be for the rest of the parcels?
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying. That's why I was asking where we were at, because on the rest of them, I'm not ready to, to vote on those without talking to the rest of the neighbors in that area. But on this one piece, I'm ready to do that.
I believe you can take the action on these individually.
Okay. Thank you, Marcia. Any further discussion? I'll recognize- Any further discussion? I'll recognize Alderman Bill Waugh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the piece that we're discussing right now is the piece that J.D. Precast is doing their business on. Is that correct?
Correct.
Marcia.
And if I could ask Marcia a couple more questions or even the owner of J.D. Precast, how long have you been in this location? I think somebody said thirty-seven years? And during that thirty-seven year period, how many times have you expanded your business?
I'll rec- recognize Mr. Olson.
Probably about three or four times.
So you've bought adjacent, adjacent land over the years to expand your business?
I've been on the same property, but I added buildings and stuff like that. And, uh, in ninety-six, I got a building permit from the county, and it, and it said that it was light industrial is what they called it at that time.
Okay, that answers my question. Thank you.
Any further discussions? Seeing none. Motion on the floor is for approv- approval with, uh, PID. Any further discussion? All in favor, indicate by saying aye. All opposed, same sign? No. Amber, roll call, please.
Lloyd, look right. Chapman?
Aye.
Olson? Wyffenbach?
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Hadcock?
Aye.
Wa?
Aye.
Martenson?
Aye.
Quaker?
No.
Costello?
Aye.
That's eight to two.
Motion passes eight to two. Thank you, everyone. Onto one seventeen.
A request by the City of Rapid City for an amendment to the adopted comprehensive plan to change the land use designation from low-density residential to general commercial on property located west of Valley Drive and north of South Dakota Highway forty-four. My motion is to deny.
Do we have a second, please?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to deny. Any discussion on that motion? Let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hadcock.
Marcia, can you show us where this piece is now?
Little gray spot up there.
Look for the arrow.
This would be on Royal Nielsen's property, uh, but not directly adjacent to South Dakota forty-four.
So that'd be that top piece, Marcia?
Not the very top piece. It's kind of an in-between piece.
Marcia, can you circle that?
Sure.
We have all this technology. We might as well use it. There we go.
Do you have the map that you had up there with, that had the zoning up there, Ms. Marcia, please? Thank you.
This piece would be approximately right in this locale. And this is the proposal that Mr. Olson submitted.
That would be, what? Can she draw that one more time?
This is the proposal. This map is the proposal that Mr. Olson submitted.
Marcia, can you go ahead and try and draw it in again?
Oh, thank you.
So the piece is, what piece are we talking about again? Can you X that?
Approximately there in the red.
I never knew there was that piece. Um, and that's the light industrial, right? General commercial to, or I'm, I'm sorry, I'm getting tired. Low-density residential to general commercial.
That was what, uh, Mr., uh, Nielsen had submitted. Mr. Olson had submitted a different plan. This is, this is shown as general commercial in the plan that Mr. Nielsen had submitted. Mr. Olson submitted it as light industrial.
I guess I'm confused. I thought all the green was heavy industrial and that's what we had to change for Mr. Olson.
Mr. Olson is asking for this piece here, which he's indicated he would like to acquire from Mr. Nielsen in addition to what he already owns. That's what he wants, heavy industrial. This is a piece over.
Okay, so we, what we did was just the first and second one to the east there, and now we're doing the piece up there, and we haven't, um, done the other green piece that's to the west of those two pieces. Sorry, I'm probably not making too much sense, but, um.
No, we haven't gotten to that one yet.
I thought that big chunk that's all striped up there is the one that's supposed to be one piece in order to do light industrial on, but I'm incorrect. We're just.
Well, again, what?
Do me a favor, Marcia.
Mr. Olson submitted is, is here. Mr. Nielsen had previously submitted that as general commercial.
I may, might make this complicated, but can you write in one sixteen, one seventeen, and what all those pieces, where are all those one sixteen, one seventeen, one eighteen, one nineteen? I think that would be helpful. One twenty, one twenty-one, one twenty-two, and one twenty-three.
Those are linked online, and I have, I have a hard copy of the rezoning one, but we prepared that for you last meeting.
I understand that, but this is hard to read and figure out what pieces by piece that we're doing.
Okay, I've got my cheat sheet up here that I drew up for myself. The piece that, um, is shown. These will show. This is CA thirteen.
See, Marcia, don't, don't do CA thirteen. Tell us what the item on the agenda is.
That would be one eighteen.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You're gonna make me translate this all here on, on this fly?
Now, you're looking for one seventeen, which is the hatched area.
This piece here, that little square, that is CA twelve, which is number one seventeen. The, um, piece here, that is CA fourteen, which is number one nineteen. And I think that takes care of what's left.
So Jerry's one sixteen, one nineteen, one twenty.
My missing one?
How about one twenty?
One twenty's a rezoning.
Is Ted here by chance? Yes, it is. Ted, if we wanted to put heavy industrial for Jerry Olson's property, what numbers would that be? Is that one sixteen, one nineteen, one twenty, and one twenty-two?
That's correct. Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and Royal Nielsen's, if we wanted to put light industrial towards the forty-four and low-density residential on the top of where the residents' concerns are, right next to Royal Neer- Nielsen on the top part,
Yes.
what piece would that low-density residential area be?
It would be a portion of one eighteen. Um, it would be that northern portion. And, um, talking with Royal and, uh, since this map is drawn that you're looking at, he has, uh, asked for a change and is willing to go with, uh, LDR on the north end, and the rest of the south end is light industrial. Now, from what I understand with Marcia and Karen is that if, if that is the case, uh, you would have to come back and, and revise this at another meeting, approve that separately at a later date. So that's part of the complication here is that we would probably have to come back with, uh, Mr. Nielsen's property with, uh, different legal descriptions and, and different areas shown.
So we would have to continue if we wanted to do one seventeen, one eighteen, one twenty-one, and one twenty-three on Royals, whether we wanted to change it to low-density residential or anything tonight, we'd have to continue those to change what we needed to be put on those.
That is true, and, and my understanding is that you could definitely approve, uh, Mr. Olson's one sixteen, one nineteen, one twenty, one twenty-two separately and act on those tonight.
I guess that would be my motion, Mayor, is because this is so complicated, it's pretty easy to me from the neighbors' responses from Mr. Jerry Olson's on one sixteen, one nineteen, one twenty, and one twenty-two, um, to approve those would be one motion, and the others would be continue one seventeen, one eighteen, one twenty-one, and one twenty-three. Can I do that in one motion or is that too complicated?
Where's Jason? I'm not sure that legally we can do that. I think we can continue, we can, uh, continue some of those, I believe, but to approve, I think you'd have to read them individually. Why don't you go ahead and make a motion, uh, Deb, and, and we'll walk through this. Let's just start with the continuation motion.
So continuance on Royals would be one seventeen, one eighteen, one twenty-one, and one twenty-three based on what the neighbors have said and what we would need to do for Royal Nielsen and the neighbors to change that. So that'd be one motion.
Okay, let's deal with that. So the.
On the continuance.
Right, so the motion you're offering is to continue item one seventeen, one eighteen, one twenty-one, and one twenty-three?
Yes.
And to continue that for two weeks?
Yes.
Okay, let's deal with that first. Is, is there a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second to continue item one seventeen, one eighteen, one twenty-one, and one twenty-three for two weeks in the next city council meeting. Any discussion on that motion? Let's go to. Okay, and we had a second. Let's go to Alderman Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate, um, the, the council trying to work, um, maybe some better solution or some different solution that, I mean, hopefully will satisfy, um, everyone to some degree in this. I, I have a concern, though, if we're asking growth management to go back, make these changes, come back with a map that reflects something what, um, the applicant is asking without some show of this current map still being in place. My understanding from what Ted said was that Mr. Nielsen would like to split some of the property and have some of it LDR and some of it light industrial. I'd like to see that in this current form as well as in the newly proposed form. And somewhere in that, I'm gonna ask that somehow if we do this, that there's something tied to this that cleans up that, that gets that property cleaned up.
Okay. There again, motion.
I'm not making a motion, just.
Right.
Talking.
Okay, motion on the floor is to continue item one seventeen, one eighteen, one twenty-one, one twenty-three for the next council meeting. Any further discussion on the continuation motion? We did have a second, correct? Amber, wanna make sure. Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. That does take us to item one nineteen, please. Karen, could you read in one nineteen, please?
One nineteen, a request by the City of Rapid City for an amendment to the adopted comprehensive plan to change the land use designation from general commercial to heavy industrial with a planned industrial development property located west of Valley View Drive, or, excuse me, west of Valley Drive and north of South Dakota Highway forty-four, and my motion is to deny.
Do we have a second? Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Discussion on that motion. Motion is for denial. Let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hadcock.
Again, I have a substitute. We approved one sixteen, um, to complete this in order to expand this business and to put, um, Jerry Olson in expansion, it, we need one nineteen, one twenty, and one twenty-two. So my motion would be a substitute to approve one nineteen.
Second. Okay, we have a substitute motion and a second for approval of item one nineteen, which is an amendment to the adopted comprehensive plan to change the land use designation from general commercial to heavy industrial with a planned industrial development. And this all being located west of Valley Drive and north of South Dakota Highway forty-four. Discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderman, Alderwoman Hadcock. Did you have anything else? I'll make sure. Okay. Let's go to Alderman Lloyd LaCroy.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm in support of this motion on, on the floor, cause I think this is the one that gets the expansion and hel- helps out the business. Um, and the only reason I'm really approving the, uh, I approve this is, you know, is I drive by a Precast company every day, and there's not, uh, much noise and, or disruption, and, uh, as I said before, the neighbors that, uh, spoke highly of Mr. Olson and how, how well-kept it is. On the rest of the, the property, I'm not ready to, to further back. I'm not ready to, to attack. I'm not at this point in time, though. Thank you.
Thank you. The motion on the floor is for approval. Any further discussion on item one nineteen? Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Uh, let's take a roll call, please. I think I heard a couple. Amber, if you could do a roll call.
Oh, excuse me? I am.
Yeah, we're gonna do a roll call.
Aye.
Olson?
No.
Wyffenbach?
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Hadcock?
Aye.
Wa?
Aye.
Martenson?
Aye.
Quaker?
No.
Costello?
Aye.
Look right.
Motion passes eight to two. Very good. Thank you, everyone. That is the, uh, that is one nineteen. Alderwoman Olson, could you read in item one twenty, please?
Yes. Second reading of ordinance fifty-five twenty-six, an ordinance amending section seventeen point oh six of chapter seventeen of the Rapid City Municipal Code, rezoning the within-described property as requested by the City of Rapid City for a rezoning from no-use district to heavy industrial on property located west of Valley Drive and north of South Dakota Highway forty-four. My motion would be to deny.
Do we have a second, please?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for denial. Discussion on that motion.
And this is the actual property where.
I'm sorry?
This is the property where Mr. Olson's actual business is located.
Okay. Let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hadcock.
If we could approve and make, hopefully, I guess we can do this separate. My motion would be to move approval.
Okay, we have a substitute motion and a second for approval of item one twenty, which is rezoning from no-use district to heavy industrial district, and this is located west of Valley Drive and north of South Dakota Highway forty-four. Any discussion on that motion? Motion is for approval. Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. We're onto item one twenty-two, please. Alderman Olson, Alderwoman Olson, if you could read in one twenty-two, please. Karen, use your microphone. Can you start over forth, please?
Second reading of ordinance fifty-five twenty-eight, an ordinance amending section seventeen point oh six of chapter seventeen of the Rapid City Municipal Code, rezoning the within-described property as requested by the City of Rapid City for rezoning from no-use district to heavy industrial district on land located west of Valley Drive and north of South Dakota Highway forty-four. My motion is to deny.
Do we have a second, please?
Second.
We have a motion and a second for denial. Discussion on that motion.
My question, Mr. Mayor, this is the property that Mr., um, Olson's, um, where they, where J.D. Precast is actually located. Am I correct on that?
Karen or Marcia, is that correct?
We're just double checking that here.
This one twenty-two, he has two pieces.
This is where it would expand on to.
This would be Mr. Nielsen's property.
Mr. Nielsen's property, what Mr. Olson would like to acquire.
Okay, very good. Everyone clear on that? Okay, the motion on the floor is for denial, and there is a second. Discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hadcock.
Again, this is the expansion where Mr. Olson would go. My motion would be a substitute to approve this for his final, um, plot approval, hopefully.
Okay, we have a substitute motion. Do we have a second? Okay, we have a substitute motion and a second for approval of the rezoning from no-use district to heavy industrial district. Uh, this being. district to heavy industrial district, this being located west of Valley Drive and north of South Dakota Highway forty-four. Discussion on that motion. Any further discussion on that motion? Motion is for approval of item one twenty-two. Nope, item one, one twenty-two. Let's just be clear on the motion. Item one twenty-two is second reading of ordinance fifty-five twenty-eight, which is a rezoning from no-use district to heavy, heavy industrial district, there again, located west of Valley Drive and north of South Dakota Highway forty-four. Everyone clear on the motion? Seeing no further lights, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed?
No.
Did, I'm not sure how many, was there just one no? Okay, let's take a quick roll call, please. Who?
Yes. Wyffenbach? Kroger? Haddock? Wa? Martinson? Quaker? Costello?
Aye.
LaCroy?
Aye.
Chapman? Eight to two.
Motion passes eight to two, thank you, everyone. We're on to item one twenty-four, please. Alderwoman Olson, could you ring that in? And turn your microphone?
A request by Dream Design International Incorporated for variance to the subdivision regulation to waive the requirement to install sidewalk, water, and sewer and to reduce the pavement width from twenty-six feet to twenty feet along access easement as per chapter sixteen point sixteen of the Rapid City Municipal Code on property located at eighteen fifty-one Discovery Circle. My motion would be to approve with stipulations.
But Mike, I need to recommend to you that you would continue this to September twenty-first, that one of the stipulations was that item night, number eleven would have to be approved tonight, since you continued that, we'll need to continue this item as well, so continue to September twenty-first.
Second. Okay, we have a motion, second to continue, Marcia, date specific? Two weeks? Okay, very good. We have a motion and a second to continue this item for two weeks to the twenty-first, seeing discussion on that motion. Motion is to continue. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item one twenty-five, please.
Authorizing Mayor and Finance Officers to sign the waiver of right to protest a future assessment for the installation of sewer and water along Elkvale Road as they abut the unval, unplotted, excuse me, unplatted balance of property located at the southeast, located southeast of the intersection of Cheyenne Boulevard and north Elkvale Road. My motion is to approve.
We have a motion and second for approval, any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item one twenty-six, please.
A request by Dream Design International Incorporated for a variance to the subdivision regulation to waive the requirement to install water and sewer along Elkvale Road as per chapter sixteen point sixteen of the Rapid City Municipal Code on land located southeast of the intersection of Cheyenne Boulevard and north Elkvale Road. My motion is for approval with stipulations.
I have a motion and second for approval with stipulations, any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item one twenty-seven, the bill list, Mr. Preston.
Thank you, Mayor. The, the bill list totals eight million, eight hundred thousand, seven hundred seventy-nine dollars and seventy-six cents. I'd like to add two items to that. First one is KRM Concrete, and that's for ADA compliant project, twenty-three thousand, five hundred and thirty-three dollars and forty cents. And the second one is the South Dakota Municipal League, six annual conference registrations for six hundred dollars, makes a new total of eight million, eight hundred and twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and thirteen dollars and sixteen cents.
Move approval of bill list as amended.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the bill list as amended for a grand total, eight million, eight hundred and twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and thirteen dollars and sixteen cents. Thank you. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Mr. Green? Do we have an executive session?
We do, and it would be for the purposes permitted by STCL one dash twenty-five dash two.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to go into executive session for purposes permitted by STCL one dash twenty-five dash two. Any discussion on the motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Very good, we are in adjourn. We have a motion, second to adjourn, just, I just wanna make sure we note that this is gonna be the shortest meeting in our history, we're gonna adjourn after twenty-eight minutes. Seven twenty-eight, what the clock says, make sure the minutes reflect that. Yeah. Alls in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. We're adjourned, thank you.